Good evening, Stonecrest. Looks like our technical issues have been resolved. Uh, Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind as to give us a roll call, please?
Good evening. Mayor Jess McCobble.
Present.
Councilmember Tara Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Five.
Present.
Councilmember Alicia Washington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem George Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. Welcome to this work session of the City Council of Stonecrest. The time now is six seventeen. Council, you have an agenda before you. I have one request for an adjustment, and that is to remove item C. It was on for discussion. I'm saying that would be moved. I would say removed, moved to another meeting. Okay, we'll take it off of tonight's meeting.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, Councilwoman Washington.
I also wanted to make an adjustment on the agenda.
All right, say aye.
Under the on B, letter B, under the unhoused individuals, I wanted to remove Tony Ewing of the New Birth Missionary Baptist Church. And then I want to replace it with, uh, Shawanda.
Are you just changing the name of the presenter?
Yes, change the name of the person.
That won't be necessary to change if that's the only change.
Just change the name.
Okay, but the item remains the same?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Anyone else?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilman Five.
Is there a reason we are removing item C?
Uh, that is a request from our city manager. Uh, when items are not ready for discussion and supporting documents, I respect the city manager's request to remove it.
And is, is there a...
Madam City Manager, are you clear to give a reason or you just want to leave it as is?
Yes, um, still working with finance to ensure that we have the appropriate documentation that is required for this type of grant that we're applying for.
Understood.
And we also had made a request that, uh, previously to get it removed and it was an administrative oversight and not being removed prior to it being posted.
Understood.
Thank you very much. Any other adjustments? There are none, then we will proceed with the agenda as, well, let's go ahead and vote to, uh, make the adjustment.
Representative.
Councilwoman, uh, Grimes.
I have a motion that we approve the agenda with the stated changes.
Second.
I'm probably moving second to approve the agenda with the stated changes. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion, by saying aye. Opposed, it's next out of District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The agenda is so adopted as adjusted. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda for discussion is the July monthly financial report. Ms. Gaines.
Good evening, everyone.
So, we have our revenue here, which we'll go through. And this is a report on our July twenty twenty five financials. So for revenue for Class Thirty-One, which is our taxes, and this is inclusive of multiple different taxes, we earned two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars, which gives us a year-to-date total of five million, eight hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. For our licenses and permits for the month of July, we earned thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which brings us a year-to-date total of four hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. For my Class Thirty-four, which is charges for services, we took in thirty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, which gives us a year-to-date total of two hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and four dollars. For our fines and forfeitures, we took in two thousand, seventy-eight dollars, which gives us a year-to-date total of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Class Thirty-Six, we took in thirteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars for a year-to-date total of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. For our Class Thirty-Eight, which is miscellaneous, we took in thirteen thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars for a total of year-to-date of one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine, which gives our July total of revenue collected three hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and a year-to-date total of six million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen. And again, we are still waiting for our property taxes to come in, which happens in our fourth quarter. This is just a different view, and it gives it to you in chart form of the revenue we collected. And as always, I've given up our top five revenue sources, which of course is Georgia Power, our business and occupational taxes, avalorium tax, uh, building permits. These are expenses by department. We have expended a total year-to-date of seven million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars amongst the various departments. This breaks down our expenditures by class. Class Fifty-One, which is personnel, we spent four million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Our Class Fifty-Two, which is all services purchased, two million, six hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen. Class Fifty-Three, we spent four hundred and forty-four thousand, seven fifty-three. Fifty-Four is our capital outlay. We spent two hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. And towards our debt service, we paid thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. This is just another chart of our year-to-date expenses versus revenue. Revenue was six million, seven hundred ninety-one, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, and expenses were seven million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. This is a, an accumulation of our other funds. Hotel motel, we've collected five hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six. Our splot, six million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Grants, twenty-five hundred, and our URA has collected four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. We've collected the majority of everything that we've budgeted for, but again, our taxes are still waiting to come in. Our other fund expenses. For ourber, we've spent one hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. From our tree bank, we spent eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Hotel motel, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight. For capital projects, we've spent one million, six hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. From our grants, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and from URA, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight. In total, over all of our funds, we've spent nine million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Next. For our court revenue, we've collected a total of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars thus far. In our finance updates, we're continuing to streamline our processes. We are coming to the final stages of implementation for our AP automation, and what that means for the city is our payables process will be streamlined. Payments will go out to our vendors and our other, um, companies that we work with in a much cleaner and smoother process and more, in a more timely fashion. We are in the process of creating our FY twenty-six budget. And some procurement updates. This is a list of all the procurement opportunities that are there. We have three solicitations that will come before council at our next council meeting, and we have bids due tomorrow for our zebo's, and then that will officially come to council in October. But this is accumulation of all the products, projects that we're working on and that are either with procurement or with engineering. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much. Council?
Representative.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, uh, Director Gaines. If you could go back to revenue and expenses, please, for me. Is that, is that the one where the revenue and expenses are side by side? Yes. Yes, ma'am. So, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. I am the mic. Can you hear me, Director Gaines? Yes, ma'am. I don't want to talk so loud. Okay, for, um, the amount that we ended with for revenue versus expenses, those are the correct numbers. The sixty, uh, six million, seven ninety-one, eight fifteen oh four, that's... Yes, ma'am. And then the seven million, seven eighty-nine, five ninety-seven, eighteen. Yes, ma'am. My... The answer is probably that we're going to continue to get our revenue toward in the fall, yeah? Yes, ma'am. Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that that's... Yes. Say it again. I was hoping that you would have said that right there, so I just wanted to come back to that. Okay. And then the other one was, um, other expenses, the grants piece? Yes, ma'am. Um, not other revenues, other expenses. Help me understand that number. Is it because we are just getting our grants person on... Help me understand that eight seventy-seven thirty. That's just what was spent. Has nothing to do with the fact that we just got a grant administrate? Okay. No, ma'am. That was spent as of July thirty-first. Make sure that's clear. And then the court revenue, I think I heard, I don't know if I got dyslexia in my ears, but I thought I heard you say seventy-eight, and on here, it, on what I have, it says sixty-eight. Yes. So... July wasn't added on to the slide. Okay. So I made sure I updated that. So for the month of July, there was a total collected of ten thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, which is to be added to the... Ten, five, eighty, what's the cents? Twenty-three. Twenty-three. Yes, ma'am. Which then brought it to the six, to the seventy-eight. Six thirty-nine. Six thirty-nine. And sixty-six cents. Sixty-six, okay. Yes, ma'am. That's what I needed for that. That's it for now. I'll let somebody else speak.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? McCobble?
This is just a administrative change. On, um, the slide for July revenue by class with the chart and the graph,
Uh-huh.
where you have the top five revenue.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what we have, we have business occupation tax, title and avalorium tax, and building permits, which are actually three revenue sources. Georgia Power and snapping shoals are franchise fees.
Ah.
And you just changed that to one category, that's franchise fees, of course, add them together, but list all the franchise fees. I know that Georgia Power and snapping shoals are two of the highest franchise fee, um, contributors, but if you'll just make that a line, like all the other revenue lines, and if you want to put a fifth one, you can.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, but just represent franchise fees in total for me, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gaines. Uh, it, it might just be me, but it seems like we're not coming through as loud as we normally do, so I know you have a new toy. Uh, just want to make sure we are being picked up and properly recorded. Okay, good, good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilwoman Graves.
Thank you. I'm looking at the July twenty twenty-five revenue by class.
Yes, ma'am.
So when I look at the charges for service, when we did the report last month for June, was that report up to date? Because I know we had a discussion about the reporting time, but from June, it stated the budget amount was three hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred. But on this report, it says six thousand, I mean, six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
What was that number for June, you said?
Three hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. And there's a couple of them, but that one just kind of stood out. I wasn't sure if the June report was accurate, only because I know we was discussing the reporting time.
Mm-hmm. Yes, the June was accurate. Um, things fluctuate, budget adjustments are made, and we just did our huge FY twenty-five, but I will double check and send you that first thing in the morning, um, from the June report and the July report side by side, so you can compare the two. I don't have it in front of me, so...
Oh, I have it. You want to see it?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gaines, there was two versions of the June that, um...
Oh, yeah.
A whole lot of...
Mm-hmm.
Back and forth for hours and hours about it, so you may, you may not be looking at the up-to-date one, but just know that there was more than one produced.
Yeah.
I was looking at the one that was in the packet, so that's why I was, I stated a different one, but a lot of the numbers are not adding up from June to July.
I will give you a comparison from the June and July, so that we can remedy that for you.
Say that again.
I will give you a comparison showing the June and the July, so that you can remedy that, and I can show you the actionable true numbers from the system.
Oh, the correct budget amount is the six hundred and eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
Yes, we did have some budget adjustments and, you know, funds removed around a little bit as this budget was loaded from the, you know, old system and things, so there's some administrative things that we're working on.
Okay, we can look at it.
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilman Five.
Um, this is that, and I'm not interrupting the floor. Um, Councilwoman Graves, where are you seeing that in the public packet? Do you have the, um, a particular page number for that?
Just looking at her presentation, the PowerPoint, page four.
Page four. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Graves, are you complete?
Um, yes. Me and, um, I will have a, make an appointment with Ms., uh, Ms. Gaines.
Good, good. Anyone else?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilman Five.
Um, Director, Director Gaines, um, I'm noticing this is in, a bit of an admin tweak. Under Tree Bank, under, on, under Initiatives, we have District Three Initiative Tree Bank. Um, is that, did you mean to put District One for the, um, little cedars that were planted alongside, um, Mall Parkway?
Um, are you looking at the report or the presentation?
Oh, Mountain Industrial.
You're looking at the report or the presentation?
Um, report. So it's under...
That's the way that the accounts were set up. We're working to get that, some of those accounts consolidated and more to a liking, um, but you're saying that that was District Three and not District One?
That was District One, not District Three.
Okay.
Um, in addition...
Councilman Five, uh, the city manager wanted to add something to that.
Uh, you, you, uh, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The Tree Bank Fund is not, uh, separated out by district. The, the payments may be based on where it was paid, but the Tree Bank itself is not by district.
Yeah, that was, my next question actually is, because it says that, and it says out of District Three Initiatives, which is District One Initiatives, it, does that mean to say, I just want to make sure that it wasn't paid out of, uh, uh, Councilwoman Graves's budget, it was paid out of this, this bank?
No, it is, it would be paid out of the Tree Bank Fund. I think it may be in, in, uh, just the clerical era that it says, that the account itself says District One Tree Bank Fund, or Tree Bank Fund District One. The Tree Bank Fund is not district-specific.
And do we have the activity under that? I don't see, I see the eighty-one, I, the eighty-one hundred and change, but I don't see any activity from that. Are we going to see the... I, the eighty-one hundred and change, but I don't see any activity from that. Are we going to see the um, the, how much money was pulled, pulled out of that for the Tree Bank and show, show that reflection in the next month's budget? Or does that need to be seen?
That would be the expense for that. The um, entire portion of what is in the Tree Fund, the revenue, the initial, the revenue that we would have started with at twenty-five, um, when they update the report, you should be able to see that and this as an expense for the period in which it occurred. And you should see that going forward.
And I'm so sorry, but from my education, and uh
We started the Tree Bank a couple of years ago and added about, and these are going to be rough numbers, so don't hold me to any of this.
Let's slip in.
It was around eighty-nine thousand dollars. We have had about two um expenditures out of there. I cannot recall what the first amount was, and it may have been around the same amount. Um, and then now we have this eighty-one hundred. So, um, please bear in mind that we have also changed um, staff and finance. And so we're kind of working through each one of the funds, but you will see the, I'm going to say the eighty-nine thousand minus the X dollar amount in this eight, eight thousand dollars, and you'll have a balance of, I don't know, seventy-some, seventy-some thousand. Um, and then that, that, then from here on, you'll see the seventy thousand as the amount for the Tree Bank Fund until there is another either um point where we're doing some type of tree recompense and/or some type of expense where the city is planting trees in a designated area.
Okay, so, and just for my, need to make sure I understand it, we will see the full amount in there after the clerk, after um, some of the changes that need to be made in that fund?
Minus the two expenses.
Minus the two expenses, which will
One of them being the eighty-one twenty-three that's in the report.
Okay. Um, how soon can we see that?
Um, the, the next report, but you'll also see it when we, well, I don't want to speak for it. Let me let Ms. Gaines answer how soon she can get that.
Um, yes, it's definitely, I'm working on the August report and working on closing that out. So there are just some, I guess, GL lines that were created when the system was first implemented, and the, some of the lines aren't necessary, so there's just some clerical cleaning up that we're doing. And we'll get everything moving into the right categories that they should be in. But you'll definitely, you'll see the change in the August report.
That is an accurate reflection of the expense.
Um, I feel Councilwoman Graves has something to say, so I will yield the floor to her, if that's allowed, Mayor Protem.
I was just going to say, um, the first project for the Tree Bank was done in twenty-twenty-four. So for twenty-twenty-five, you would just see this eight thousand, um, one hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-two.
Councilwoman Graves, that is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and my second question for this is, I see that we have about this, and City Manager, you can hop into this one, um, we have a seventy-five thousand vehicle expense for City of Lethonia. Could you explain to me what that is?
On, I believe it was December, may have been the December council meeting, I can't remember which one it was, but um, the council allocated ARPA funding. Part of that included a vehicle for um executive protection.
Sorry, see that last part again?
The ARPA funding included a seventy-five thousand dollar expense for execu, a executive protection vehicle. I believe it was the December twenty-third council meeting.
It was in the MOU that you voted on, reviewed twice, and agreed to.
Mayor, Mayor Protem.
Uh, I will ye, uh, Mayor Protem, I'll yield to Councilwoman Graves.
Do you remember us um, voting on that? But I thought it was a timeframe that the vehicle had to be purchased.
Um, I believe it probably would have been before the ARPA funds were um totally allocated, which would have been twenty-six, and we paid it, um, I believe the end of twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, could you, so talk me through, is it a, what's the reason it's called City of Lethonia? Um, just talk, talk me through that?
The expense line?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that vehicle was originally purchased from, um, by the City of Lethonia, and the City of Stonecrest paid Lethonia for the vehicle and its full out, outfit.
So it's um, so it's a, and so help me to understand this, it's a vehicle that the City of Lethonia purchased, that we then retrofitted and purchased back using ARPA funds?
No.
No. May I try to use some layman's terms?
Hold on one second. Um Councilwoman By, you're yielding to the mayor's, she wants to explain.
I, I don't know what's the point of being the mayor if I can't add context to a conversation.
No, no, it's a matter of when, uh, Councilwoman By.
Um, sure, I, I will yield to the mayor.
No worries. I'll wait till I get permission to talk when.
Very well. Councilwoman By.
Yes, so, again, could you, again, so, again, so, help me to understand that, City Manager, we did purchase using ARPA funds, the vehicles, the city vehicle from, from Lethonia, used that seventy-five thousand for that, and then we put that in, and then we, is it because it was an equal trade, it was an equal value vehicle, is it something of that nature? Could
No, sir. Um, the City of Lethonia um, provides security and executive protection for the City of Stonecrest through an MOU.
Is that attached to the um, city, to the, to the um, police services we do with the parks, with the parks?
Um, it is attached, it is not police services to the parks, it is security for parks, facilities, and city meetings.
Yes ma'am, thank you for the clarification. Alright, I will, I will yield to the mayor, um, for that, for that a bit of explanation. Could you clarify on a bit of that?
Uh, last year, uh, the council approved an MOU with the City of Lethonia Police Department to provide multiple levels of um, security services. I'm pulling this MOU up because I'm going to read this section to you, so that we can move on past this conversation. In that uh, MOU, it lists that the City of Lethonia's Police Department will provide, of course, um, security services for our city facilities, or our uh, city events, which includes our parks, and also has a section for executive protection. In that section for executive protection, it includes reimbursing the City of Lethonia up to seventy-five thousand dollars for an executive protection vehicle. That is what you see there, uh, because it abides by the MOU, which is a contract between the City of Lethonia and the City of Stonecrest.
And could you remind me, that was in our December meeting, correct?
I don't recall what date it was, but I'm trying to pull it up, or I'm trying to pull up the actual MOU. If you're asking for a copy of the MOU on which you all have voted on more than a year ago, I'd be glad to send it back to you.
Please do, because my understanding for that was that would be simply for parks. Um, but again, that is, that's under my, that's under my jurisdiction to read that, go through the MOU completely. Um, and I appreciate that kind of, that feedback on that, so um, I think I've, and I think I've gotten my questions answered on that piece, but I appreciate the kind of the clarification on that.
You'll give me just a moment here. I will give you uh, context from that section.
Well, we, well, of course, we don't, we don't have to do it on the
Discussion, so let's make it a public response.
While you're looking it up, I will add that this item has been on the agenda, not on the agenda, but on the financial report since January, I'm sure, if not earlier.
So the MOU was executed with a section. I have it in front of me, I'm trying to pull up that particular section for you. It may have been more than fifty-five, correct?
Do you have it handy, or should we come back?
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem. I have it in front of me. I don't want to read the entire thing. Um, I'm sure you prefer not to read the entire thing, so I was just going to read this one particular section, since there seems to be quite the conversation around it. Article six, compensation in consideration. I won't read the entire section. I'll read this sentence that says, "At the execution of this agreement, Stonecrest shall make a one-time payment into the general fund of the City of Lethonia in the mountain not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of one special service vehicle. At the conclusion of this agreement with the City of Lethonia, the vehicle shall transfer to the title of Stonecrest, to the City of Stonecrest."
And so, and what meeting was that? It was um, it was a December or a September meeting?
Councilwoman By, I have, do not keep up with the dates in my head on when each item was voted for. I simply keep all things that I sign, that the charter allows me to sign, uh, handy in a folder. I do not recall the date in which you all voted and agreed upon this.
If I may, uh, the city clerk should have that on record, so we can get that if you want it at a later time.
Understood.
Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman By, are you finished?
Yes, sir, yes, Mayor Protem, I yield the floor.
Councilwoman Graves.
Who keeps, um, Attorney Dearmark? Do you, your office keeps a copy of everything that we sign that's legal? No, I want to, okay, so I want to strike you out of that, okay. Where, where can we find the documents that we have, um, the MOUs that we have signed hard, the hard copy, mayor, that you would have um, put your signature to? Who, who would have those hard copies?
The clerk's office keeps a record of every single thing voted on
Okay.
and approved. There is a, there's um, all of your record-keeping happens in the clerk's office.
And at some point, it should be online as well, most of it, yeah. As you, finished? Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor Protem.
Council, I mean, Mayor Cobble, please.
Whatever title you want to give me, Mayor Protem, I'll take it.
You'll be mayor today.
Thank you. Um, I, just for context for the general public, we moved, and City Manager, help me with the dates. Um, we started implementing a new ERP system, enterprise system for um, our finance, uh, our finances, and we started this process in twenty-three? Was it late twenty-three? Maybe earlier than that?
It was late, uh, it was probably fall of twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, there was a hard implementation in April of twenty-four.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and there were many a things that we have been addressing.
Yeah, that's good. Wanted to, um, give the, again, the public some, um, context. So we've been moving from one financial system to another financial system. Um, so that, in a nutshell, we were using a financial system, being a young city, um, what I call, uh, like, the free version of uh, financial systems. It wasn't free. Uh, but very basic, uh, just had basic levels of, of reporting, querying, uh, and being able to keep records and, and the third-party company that we began the city with, um, put us on that system. Uh, and then, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, we moved to a more sophisticated system. Uh, we began, of course, to have more sophisticated processes. We went from being um, uh, a city that was using a third-party service, uh, to run our entire city, to bring everything in-house, including our personnel, our systems, our softwares, our hardwares, everything came in-house. When we did that, we decided to move to a more sophisticated system. Uh, so over the last year and a half, what you probably have not seen, it's in the, in the background, is our finance team um, trying to go cut over from one system to another. As you know, with any other information system, when you cut over from one to another, some things come over perfectly, other things come over miscoded, and all kinds of wild stuff happens. Some things you can see immediately, other things, when you make a change in one place, it changes something else, you had no intention on it changing, and then you go back to the coding, and then, so there's, there's a lot that goes into an implementation of a, of an information system. Uh, and a financial information system even more so. So as we go through each of these reports, uh, this is actually a new reporting format. If you look back a few years ago, the reports looked even different than they do now. Um, so this is one of the benefits of our new system. However, it also um, is showing where we need to go back through and make some changes, where we see some coding, uh, that's, that's incorrect. And we are working with that vendor each and every day. When we, sometimes when we make a change in one place, something else changes that was unintentional, so you have to go back and kind of find that thing. Uh, so one good example, uh, is the Tree Bank Fund, where underneath of it, you see department, and it has mayor and council. Well, that's a coding error, that shouldn't be there. There isn't a mayor and council, uh, line, uh, in the budget under the Tree Bank, right? So we know that's an error. Uh, so some of this is system error, some of this is just the, the kinks and the pains of going from one system to another. Our, we, me, I don't know, what, Lakeisha Weekly, uh, on combing through, uh, the budget reports, or just reports in general, to find some of these things. It takes time, uh, but I assure you that, uh, what you hear is not, um, don't confuse that with, um, folks not doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's actually the exact opposite. This is a hard-working team, um, going through this implementation process. If you've ever been through an information system implementation, you understand the words coming out of my mouth. If you've never been through one, you have no idea what I'm talking about. But rest assured, uh, that the team in each department is working hard to get, uh, all of the coding correctly, so that the report uh, looks the way it's supposed to, supposed to, with each and every report. And that's presented monthly. And not to say that, um, it will be perfect, uh, it certainly is a system which is not perfect, and nor are humans. Um, but anytime we see something, we certainly are combing through it, uh, to make sure that those changes are there. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, hopefully, when the implementation is at, is entirely complete, uh, some of this kind of just rudimentary um, cleanup will no longer be necessary. Uh, but as we become more sophisticated in our financing, as, and as we, uh, ask for more sophisticated reports and querying, uh, as we grow our budget, as our lines grow, as our revenues grow, as our expenses grow, you'll see shifts uh, that are just a clear indication of, of the progress we've made. But this system that we're on now can handle that versus the one we were on before, it was just basic and kind of just designed to get us going. Uh, now we're in a real sophisticated ERP, that's going to give us a lot more capabilities than we've had before.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Gaines, I had a few, uh, questions as well. And, uh, again, I thank you for this report, it's very comprehensive, and now we're getting to the point that we've become used to it, and I think we'll be able to dive into it a lot deeper than before. Uh, just looking at, um, page sixteen, on there, you have a transfer to general funds of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And it doesn't say where it came from. Is that something I missed, uh? And the same thing with transfer to SPOST, two hundred and three thousand, without saying exactly where it came from. Uh, may I have a seat? The manager has the answer.
Mayor Protem, those, um, that transfer to the general fund is from the hotel motel tax?
Yes.
And the transfer to SPOST is TPD, which comes from the hotel motel tax?
So we get SPOST fund from motel hotel tax separately from the other?
You get TPD funds that is a revenue source for your capital improvement program.
And if we had
And it's not SPOST. SPOST is another funding source for your capital improvement program.
Okay, and if we had no SPOST, we would still get this fund?
From the hotel motel tax, yes.
Okay, good. Just trying to understand the reports, what's coming
And then a portion of it goes back to the general fund as well. It's a percentage.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Mayor Protem, uh, just to make sure there's clarity for everyone, and not just you, SPOST is one revenue source for capital improvements. So one revenue source is not dependent on another, TPD, which is our tourism tax. The state says that some percentage of that goes uh, to the city, the other percentage goes to, uh, what we use as Discover the Cab, uh, for our um, tourism and visitors convention center. Uh, so that's one revenue source. SPOST is one revenue source. Uh, LMeg, our local maintenance, um, local maintenance, what's the I? Infrastructure grant, thank you. Um, and which is a state grant, is revenue. So I just want to make sure, a lot of us say, is that SPOST, 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 as if SPOST is capital improvements. Capital, our capital improvements budget is made up of multiple revenue sources, of which SPOST is only one. TPD is another. So just want to make sure that's clear, because sometimes even we say SPOST, like it represents capital improvements entirely, and it's just one revenue source.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm looking at the report, and it says transfer to SPOST, and just needed to know where it came from, and, uh, question was answered.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I just want to give context to those who are listening.
Alright, uh, another item Uh, another item, uh, capital project, uh, funds. Um, within it, that is where the SPOST, um, reporting resides?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'm looking at the report of, uh, SPOST revenue, and it shows, uh, six point seven million dollars for six years. I mean, six years, I'm sorry, for six months, report, six point six million. So, with that trending, uh, are we looking at about, what, thirteen or fourteen million for the year? Is it trending just, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the direct monitor of SPOST, uh, funding is you, your department?
We receive in the revenue, yes, sir.
Okay, good, so if I have any question about that, I'll come see you. Okay, good, um... I still wanted some more information about this SPOST. Uh, for the budget for FY twenty twenty-five, we budgeted three million dollars for, um... We don't call it paper, we call it, uh, resurfacing. Okay. And, uh, we actually expended, uh, two point three, which means that we have some change of about, uh, seven hundred thousand, give or take?
If nothing comes up.
Okay. I was told that we were near the end, so hopefully, nothing will come up nearly this close to the end, which means that money is still a part of our budget for, uh, SPOST resurfacing.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we also had, um, funds, I don't have the, uh, line number, set aside for sidewalks for the cab. Um, I have my answer on that, I'm sorry, skipped that.
CBDDG?
No, uh, the Cab County actually, uh, paved some sidewalks, I mean, paved the, installed sidewalks for us, so the money that we had set aside for, we don't have to use for that, we can use for other purposes. That's all I was getting to.
We already moved it.
Okay.
I, I, off the top of my head, I can't remember, but what, what the CBDDG grant, I think that's what you're referring to-
No.
Um, would have replaced in sidewalks. We had funded sidewalk design, um, not sidewalk construction, but Harry's around. I'm sure you'll talk about this when you get to your paving item.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if you're trying to count where there's other funds remaining, um, I don't know if you want to do that right now, um, but we can, you know, we can go, for sure. Um, but if you're trying to count right here on the dais, where there may be funds for your repaving item-
Resurfacing.
For your resurfacing item. You, you want to do that now, or you want to wait till-
I'm just, I'm just looking at the SPOST report, and we budgeted a certain amount, and want to know how much is left, because that is still, uh, available for that project.
So, when you say SPOST report, are you, are you saying capital improvements report?
Uh, within the capital improvement, there is a line for resurfacing.
Right, but I'm asking, are you talking about the SPOST funds?
Uh, Madam Director Finance?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, the CBDDG is a reimbursable grant, which means we have to pay for that upfront, and then get the money back, so those funds wouldn't be available to use right away.
Which is also not SPOST?
Yes, separate.
All right. Thank you.
Because SPOST is not CBDDG?
Now, uh... I had a question. My question has been answered. I don't see any reason for, uh, the debate of it. Thank you for the answer. Okay. Now, uh, since I got distracted, I had another note. Economic development, yeah, economic development, um... You have, uh, three positions in economic development?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, one's been vacant for most of the year, all of the year. Uh, Madam City Manager?
Uh, economic development position was, um, originally vacated back in March. We just recently hired Mr. Randall, about two weeks ago. Um, the other position was a, a business associate, um, business attraction, business retention, um, that, that is a vacancy that we currently have, and then we also have a recently vacated, uh, business attraction man, manager position. I've been talking with Mr. Randall, um, to identify how we're going to, uh... Make sure that we have the positions doing the correct things to provide the most benefit to the City of Stonecrest. And we're in the middle of that process now, and hope to have that, uh, completed by the time we do the, uh, FY twenty-six budget, um, in October for the city.
Okay, good, that wasn't what I was going for, but I thank you for it. No, I was just looking at the amount of funds that's been expended, and, uh, I understand that was only three months vacancy. I had in my mind it was by far more, and, uh, we're more than fifty percent over the, uh, the budget. I mean, we're at fifty percent of the budget at this point.
Most part of the year, well, a, a large portion of the salary would have gone to the director. The other two positions were, were here at least almost half of the year.
Okay.
And they are just, one of them, I think, may have been less, both of them are less than sixty days, but I think the other one may have been less than sixty days ago. And then the most current one was a couple of days ago.
Okay.
So, that would be almost fifty percent.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, the very last line on your report, it shows a report surplus of three point nine million dollars, is that correct?
That's what the report shows, this report has a revenue and expenses on it, um, so it kind of deducts it from itself. And this is a total accumulation of all the funds, not just one specific fund, but-
Yeah, I understand, but it's three point nine million so far, which says we have a very hefty fund balance.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. Anyone else?
Protem?
Mayor Cobble?
Ms. Gaines, um, when, and maybe this is just for context for those reading the report, um... The report today does not show each and every line associated with each, with each department, right? So, similarly, when we have, when you look at the annual budget, you see mayor and council, you'll see salary, you'll see district initiatives, you know, there's about ten or twelve lines. Um, when we're looking at the monthly budget, um, obviously, all lines are not listed here. All right, uh, so, for instance, um, um... I don't know, we could just pick a department, code enforcement, only has four lines listed here, which they have more than four lines in the budget. Um, so, can you provide a little context to the readers of the report about, um, when they're looking at the percentages, totals spent, totals, uh, total revenue, total expenses, total percentages, that it's not all-inclusive of that department's entire budget, because every line is not listed here?
Yes, if there's no activity, the line typically does not show up on the report-
Correct.
Unless I ask it to, and then if I do that, then you'll get a bunch of lines that makes it more complicated.
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's exactly what I wanted you to say. What we're looking at is lines that have activity for that month. Um, so, where you may see four or five lines, that department actually has maybe thirteen, uh, of which, this percentage, let's say fifty-some percent, is just a reflection of the four lines that are listed there. Not all thirteen lines that are in the budget, in the annual budget for that department. So, just want you to keep that in mind as you're looking at the budget report. It's not fifty-seven percent of that department's budget. That's the fifty, fifty-seven percent of that, of those four lines that are listed there.
And there's something, I guess, we can discuss later on, but I'm okay with looking at zeros. If nothing happened, put a zero in there, I'm okay with that. Okay, anything else?
Mayor Protem?
Counselwoman Grimes?
Now, with what Mayor Cobble just said, Ms. Gaines, and what you're showing, are you saying that this is, these are not the actual numbers?
These are the actual numbers, it's just that there are more lines that may or may not be here.
It doesn't matter, because those lines wouldn't affect the numbers?
Yes.
Yes, they would, yes, they wouldn't?
They would not affect the numbers, the percentage kind of totals up everything.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the numbers are the numbers.
Numbers are the numbers.
We don't have to have twelve Jenga boxes if only two have numbers on them. Just give me the two, keep the other ones to the side. Okay, I'm good, thank you, that's it.
Yeah, uh, Counselwoman Grimes, I made that point, because what would be affected is the percentages that you see listed. But the dollars-
Dollars and cents.
The dollars are absolutely correct, right? There's no activity, there's just a bunch of zeros.
Right.
But I think we focus a lot on the percentage column that's on that far right, um, which I just wanted to give some context to, does not contemplate, right? Because the percentage goes by the average or the total number of lines, right? So, I just wanted to give you some context that the percentage is the percentage from the numbers that are before it, to the left.
But if the lines are misleading, we should not include them.
I just want the numbers, that's all. I'm good.
I know, I just, you know, context for those who are sitting up here with us while watching our brainwaves connect, is for those who are listening who may not have caught it all.
Yeah, I would have a problem with that, if the percentages are not the actual percentages, then we probably shouldn't include it, because it can be misleading, really.
I cannot include them.
Okay, any-
I would like to see them, I don't, I don't know if you want consensus on that, but, um... It's a traditional report. I mean, I'd like to see the report in the context of what you did. Now, we need to have a, you know, a, a budget one-on-one report and kind of walk through how to read a report. I think we could do that, but I, I wouldn't, I would like to see the entire report the way it is-
Yeah.
The way a budget report, it should be-
Then perhaps this is something we can take up in the Finance Committee as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Gaines, thank you so much for your time and hard work. Next item on the agenda is for discussion, says the unhoused individuals, uh, to introduce the guest speakers on this, I am, on this topic, will be Counselwoman Washington.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, human beings are not meant to live on the streets where they are vulnerable to extremities. And although housing is a fundamental need and a basic human right, homelessness contributes, continues to be a present, persistent, and visible issue that adversely impacts communities of all sizes and demographics across the nation, including DeKalb County. This is the concern, because paying for people who are homeless for long periods of time can be very expensive to systems, public care, or even recent studies of the National Alliance of to End Homelessness System. They show that the cost, the same or less money to provide permanent housing as it does to allow people to remain homeless. In addition, sleeping outdoors often does not provide protection from the environment, quick access to hygiene and sanitation facilities, or connection to healthcare. As a result, lack of safe and stable housing can quickly contribute to poor health outcomes, a shortened lifespan, and an enormous bill for taxpayers. DeKalb has a considerable number of people who are low-income, unemployed, and homeless. The top causes of homelessness across the major US cities, cities were lack of affordable housing, unemployment, poverty, low wages, mental illness, and substance abuse. I wanted to start off this work session by, uh, allowing, uh, one of my speakers to come up, uh, to speak on what are the parameters here that we have in the City of Stonecrest with the code, uh, code enforcement, uh, to tell the constituents, uh, what we can do to help stop the unhoused. And I'm bringing up, I'm sorry, Ms. Juana Cowie, thank you.
Counselwoman, um, Washington, Mayor Protem, and Mayor City Council. I'm, I'm just going to just give other, a brief, um, background of what, um, the Code Enforcement Division is actively doing, um, to, uh, assist with this, um, very sensitive matter that we have with the, um, unhoused and, um, unsheltered. What our main focus is, is to start with, um, the concern is to deal with, um, the private property owners. We understand that, um, some of, um... The, um, issues may arise, um, with how they are, where they are located on these private, um, properties and our access, um, to those properties. Um, code enforcement, um, in the City of Stonecrest, we are allowed to, uh, enter properties that we can see where they are, um, infractions from the street, and of course, an empty parcel. Um, we are able to see the, um, encampments. But, um, our steps is to continue to work collaboratively with the property owners, because sometimes they're not aware of what's going on on their properties. Um, they may not live in the City of Stonecrest, and, um, we're using some of our resources to reach out to them, to make them aware of, um, what's going on on those parcels. Um, we know that, again, that this is a very, very sensitive matter. We, um, just hired a new code enforcement officer that has a background in working with the unsheltered and the un, um, unhoused, and we will, um, elaborate on her experience and her skills to facilitate, uh, maybe, working, um, with Mayor and City Council on a committee or a task force, and what we need to do as far as next steps to, um, provide services that we can for, um, again, for the unhoused and the unsheltered.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie. Does anybody have any questions for what she has just spoke on? Thank you. So, with, uh, we want to move forward, like, uh, with, outside of dealing with providing food and clothing and book bags, et cetera. We also want to, um, make some suggestions and see if anyone had any suggestions on how we would move forward with the task force that, um, is just a suggestion, or even having someone specifically in the Code Enforcement Department that we can have specifically to take on the duties of the unhoused. Okay, so, we want to move on, move forward, I have another speaker, because also, we want to, uh, move forward as far as the future and include housing solutions to work towards delivering permanent supportive housing, such as, um, maxi homes, uh, which, uh, we have Pastor Jamal at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church is, uh, building. Uh, tiny homes, which we have, uh, some in the City of Clarkston, who also, they are supportive with, uh, the unhoused through building tiny homes. And then we have the freight containers, which, uh, we have in front of us now, her name is, uh, Ms. Deborah Clark, and she has an organization which is called the, um, Green Shades Foundation. So, I just wanted her to come forward and just kind of tell us on some of the things that she, uh, deals with when she's dealing with the unhoused, and give us a few suggestions moving forward in the future, okay? Thank you, Ms., uh, Clark.
Well, thank you for having me, um, first acknowledging our Honorable Mayor, my Honorable Protem, and our distinguished council people. Um, I am Deborah Clark, um, they call me Dr. D, and it's because I have worked in so many grassroots areas over the last thirty years here in Atlanta and in DeKalb County as well, and I am a new resident to the City of Stonecrest just recently, and a senior citizen, and a handicappedable. So, I will be, today, I will be addressing these needs, but I'll be coming back as a, as a resident of Stones, the City of Stonecrest to, with some concerns that I have, because I'm having challenges already, so, I, and I'm housed, thank God. Um, a fortune short of hands, how many of you have, have ever experienced homelessness or have done any type of, um, outreach to the unsheltered, uh, unhoused community, if you have, okay? I needed to, um, a lot of times when we're talking about the unsheltered, and, uh, our term for it was homeless. Well, um, my son, who is an architect, he said, "Mom, if you don't own your home and your land, you have the possibility of being homeless." Well, um, my son, who is an architect, he said, "Mom, if you don't own your home and your land, you have the possibility of being homeless." So he said, "If you live with your grandmama, you're homeless. If you live with your auntie or your baby mama, you're homeless." So he helped me to redefine how to address this very, very unique demographics of individuals that we call residents of Georgia. Um, recently, um, and I don't know if it, I, were you able to get the, um, executive order done by? Okay, we had an executive order, I was working with, um, Mayor Dickens and, um, his team, um, with, and alongside, uh, uh, three other organizations that have a heart to bring affordable, sustainable, alternative housing solutions, not just to the city of, um, city of Atlanta, but also to the other surrounding counties. Um, we were very fortunate about two years ago to get in a conversation with the city of Atlanta, asking them about providing the language that the city planner and their legal would be able to put into their building and code so that when we try to present, uh, architectural drawing that needs a stamp, the language would be written into the building and code. Um, he had a challenge because at that particular time, no one wanted affordable, sustainable housing because we were pretty much connected to our additional build, which requires a lot of people working and, um, and a lot of times people did not want, as they said, "Not in my backyard." Well, he decided to do an executive order and in doing so, he was able to write the executive order and to get funding to do a small community with wraparound services. Um, and they were shipping containers, and, and in January of 2024, um, he cut the ribbon on a beautiful model that now has the language written into the city of Atlanta's code so that those that want to do an ADU or something for a grandmother or mom and dad, or even when their children are coming back home, they have a place where they can call home. Each of us love going home, and I've been working with this demographics for the last three years. Um, by, um, Senator Nano Rock asked me to come and start bringing some clarity as to the needs of this community. Um, and also too, I've been working, um, under Green Shades to actually not just talk about it, but to be about it. So we do assessments, and like I said, I have had the pleasure of working with Councilwoman Washington for a couple of years now because we were grassroots under the bridge. Um, we were grassroots in so many areas where we got a chance to actually be a part of their lives. Um, I met many young people who were in college, people working on their doctorates, licensed masseuse, welders that would transition out of prison. And as I shared with the mayor, you have constituents that are, have amazing skills, and it is your responsibility to find out how they can become a part of the collective good and bring their resources and their skills back to the county that they live in. So I've been on both sides, I started out in real estate, property manager, and I'm a project manager, so. Uh, I mean, I've been groomed to, in so many different areas, but in all that training and as a resident service director, I got to do hands-on with individuals who were looking nothing more than a hand up or friendly ear, or someone just to help them to reassess family issues and help bridge a gap. And I think that's what we're really here as the council people. I know you have limitations in a lot of what you can do, but as a human being, there's no limit to what you can do. And sometimes I think, um, because I had to be broken out of a mold so that wherever I needed to be, I was there, and I was not just there with a sigh and a "When is this thing gonna be over?" But I had to be there with my heart and my ear and my eye, really looking at, "How can I bring about change?" So over the last three years, I have been working, we're in a hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse in Atlanta, I worked with a group of architects, project managers, carpenters, builders, and we have four different types of alternative housing solutions. As small as a two hundred square foot brick home that I'm, of course, none of you could ever think you could live in a two hundred square foot building. I thought so too, until I saw this model and I was ready to move in. I'm saying this because I do have a presentation here, but I really wanted you to hear my heart today and actually see some of the product, the product line, and of course, an invitation to each and every one of you to come to our warehouse and actually see what we are doing. See the possibilities because you, seeing is believing. When I started going under the bridge, I did not realize I was getting ready to get trained and taught and encouraged. It was a educational process that I, has transformed my life because I realized beyond the places we live and eat and drive and work and play, each of you are six degrees of separation from someone who is in that situation or might be in that situation, whether they let you know it or not. I am very fortunate, um, in having to work with Senator Donzella James in doing this alternative housing. It really is, the bigger platform is, it is our effort to keep Georgia beautiful. Um, Green Shades, we help people and businesses make healthy and sustainable life choices, and so we give them options and solutions so they can change the way they live, eat, work, and play to make it greener and cleaner here. And I know where I live right now is beautiful and lots of trees, and I know the city of Stonecrest wants to keep Stonecrest beautiful. So this initiative to provide housing options, it's not just housing, we have a full training program where we will train individuals, you don't even have to know how to build. We will train you how to build one of the four models so you can be a part of your own, almost like a Habitat for Humanity, where you get to be a part of building your own house. You get it, so those that have skills, we don't know what the skills are for a lot of individuals who are homeless, but I met a lot of carpenters and builders and welders and people who have skills that they can contribute. But a lot of times, the, the impact of how we feel about the unsheltered community sometimes does not give them a chance. So if you have the presentation, if you can hit, I'm just gonna go through it real quick, if you go through the next slide. Okay, our motto is, "Let's get your hands green because our future is gonna depend on it." Um, these are the four, um, builders that I'm working with, um, eight, um, Atelier Seven. Um, he started doing a lot of, um, shipping containers, his specialty is shipping containers. ADU Depot, he does all of, you'll see our ECO Brick, it's a combination of styrofoam and cement. That particular process right now allows for a county to start a, um, styrofoam recycling, um, recycling plant because this recycling of the styrofoam is one of the products that's built into the, um, the brick. And so we have, we brought a half of a brick here so you can see how light it is. I want you to be able to touch it and, and feel it and get a kind of a sense of what that looks like. So these are some of the models that have been done. Um, of course, this is Terry, Terry is one of our, um, young project managers here, and he is one of the few that has built, um, the ECO Brick, he's worked with the shipping containers and the steel structure and the SIPs. So we have four different kinds, SIPs is a simulated insulated panel. It's waterproof, fireproof, mold-proof, earthquake-proof, and it has all the properties. Each of these building materials have the properties that give us a lower carbon footprint, and it also, it eliminates a lot of extra, there's no termite guy coming to your house. You know, if it's a hurricane, you'll be safe. Um, it's waterproof, especially our, um, shipping container models. And the, the other part of it is, we have, um, uh, quite a few individuals that would like to partner with us so that we can start building models here. We have individuals who would like to buy land so that they can put these models on there so that they can provide, uh, housing solutions. Um, there is one here, and I think if you're able to see, I think it's the one here in the orange. We have about sixty different variations of housing models. Some of them are one-story, two-story, three-story, five-story, where you can house up to five or ten people in, almost like an apartment community, and the only difference is, it's made with a sustainable, uh, eco-friendly building material. Now, what I have here on this, how it works, I don't think is, might be kind of hard for everybody to see. But this is basically what would go inside, this is four hundred square feet. You have your bathroom, your kitchen, your living room, and, um, your kitchen. And we also have a five hundred square one, one unit, if you were able to come over to the warehouse, we'd be able to show you a larger unit, and it's five hundred square feet, and you'll be amazed at how much space you have in there, especially if you're talking about transitioning people that has no space, that doesn't live in any kind of tiny little space, to those that are now living in, I mean, that's almost like a mansion to a lot of people. Um, one of the challenges that I saw when we were under, uh, working under the bridge was the level of faith those individuals had in making sure they woke up the next morning. Um, one of the dangers was not just the city coming and taking the whole thing and dumping it into their big trash container, but people would come at night to throw rocks inside their tent out of jealousy or whatever. Or, you know, one lady, she says she had a knife come through her tent at night. And I, and I thought about that, I was like, "We don't live among us here, we don't live in that kind of fear and that kind of uncertainty every day." But they do, and so if there's some way to begin to be the leader in this movement, of course, like I said, DeKalb County was doing tiny homes back of, over ten years ago. They had opened the door for that, but the technology had not caught up. The integrity in the building material had not caught up. And in our models, we also have energy efficiency as far as rainwater recapture, solar, and then we have urban gardening, which in a small space, we allow people to come outside their small, um, living quarters. And actually, you know, if you're old school, you still know how to build, you know, still know how to make collard greens grow and tomatoes. Okay, some of y'all, I'm sixty-five, y'all, so. Okay, let's hit the, the next one here, we're gonna go through this real fast. Okay, uh, keep it going. Okay, I just talked to you about Green Shades, I don't need to tell you about what we do. Uh, what we do is we make a difference, and we make it by allowing people to develop their skills and actually to give them a new skill. And that is so relevant right now because a lot of people, I don't know how many of you have children that are coming back home, um, they have made affordable housing so unaffordable that ADUs, Affordable Dwelling Units, that's the name. Um, we are now being able to include those on pre-existing homes, put them in the back of their home. You can go anywhere from four hundred square feet all the way up to twelve hundred square feet, and that way you can have an additional income and raise the value of your own property. Next slide, please. Okay, next. Okay, you, you can see the building material there, next. Those are the four organizations that work over this, this is our shipping container, those are shipping container, um, models, next. Okay, that's, we, we have a, it's called SIPs and a Steel Structure. So part of it works is SIPs, which is a simulated insulated panel, and the other structure is structured steel, is corrugated steel that is impenetrable. And so we have a model at the warehouse that you can come and see at any time, next, please. That's our brick. Okay, we provide training, um, and if you're talking about a task force, you're going to need not just, um, builders, you're gonna need teachers, project managers, and people that can teach, and you're going to need, um, uh, another organization, we call the United Youth of America. They actually provide the visual and virtual learning so that you can get virtual learning privately and you can get hands-on training right on site. And the other thing you need is community engagement, people that have a heart to want to lift up and elevate and help people to become tax-paying citizens. And, um, and they are the ones that provide the food and the resources and the wraparound services that help people to thrive. Next slide, next slide, please. Okay, next slide. We normally have a live build, we've had two over the last couple of years where you actually come on site and we show you how we start building out a model, you meet, you know, in a, in a span of four hours. We have a licensed contractor that comes so people can actually see how easy it is. Next slide, please. We also provide the training, free career training, because a lot of them already have skills. You can't live on this planet for fifty years or thirty years or forty years and you have no kind of skill. We just need to find out what that skill is and put it to practice. Next, please. This is one of the models, if you were going, this is like a vision for Stonecrest, one to three acres eco-community with eleven units, and those eleven units can either be eleven units or they can be a tri-stack. So you would, you, instead of eleven, you have thirty-three people living in that one community. Next, please. Some more models, communities by design. That one, you know, and those can be double stack or triple stack, I'm just trying to give you a vision of what a small community actually looks like. It's a small apartment complex that is functions for the people that are transitioning into, into real housing. Next slide, please. That is ten units right there, they're ten forty-foot shipping container units. Sometimes if you don't understand what that looks like, you go, "Oh, I don't know what that looks like." Well, that is a great place, I would love to take the rent off of ten of those units. Next, please, next slide. Okay, and what we propose as a partnership, or part, be a pa, part of your task force. I do have a gentleman here, Terry, you will come, come up, please. Terry, you just wanted to share a little bit, um, just a couple of seconds of what it's been like. He actually was, came straight from another job, and, uh, he's a full-time dad. Um, he is, um, an amazing young man who decided, because his dad was in construction, that he wanted to learn construction at this stage of the game in his life, and so he came on board. And then each of the contractors was able to show them how to build, so he has built each of the models that you, that you see right now. And the beautiful part about, and this is something you won't know until you do it, um, when he first started, he only wanted to know about how to build. Well, today he's just formed a basketball team called the Phoenix Warriors of the unsheltered seniors and vets and individuals that we serve at Trinity Church. He would have never, I would, I mean, that was like so amazing, because he's a basketball freak, you know? He loves basketball and, and, and he lives and eats it and breathes it, and I say, he said, "You know, my desire has always been, I want to do a basketball league." And I said, "Well, we have over, uh, Trinity Church serves over three hundred men and women every Sunday, hot meals, assessments, and clothes, and we go down there on the holiday times and we make sure we celebrate them." And so he went down there and then one Sunday, he signed up thirty-five men. So he had no clue that the dream that he would, wanted to do would, would come out of serving and learning a new skill. So Terry, just come on up and just say how, because I know they ready to move on, but I just.
Yes, indeed. Good evening to one and all, so appreciate it, uh, to be here this evening to represent Green Shades and the housing and the eco-housing especially. Um, grew up in Philadelphia with my father, he was a school teacher for over thirty years and, um, ended up getting into real estate, and in the Philadelphia area, you have these row houses that you go in from the basement to the ceiling and have hands-on with everything. Uh, back in the day, we had real hard concrete. You see the new style of concrete, it's not gonna be lifted like this, you know? And, um, in that insane, um, end up doing an undergrad at John C. Smith University, majoring in computer science, I've done work with IBM, uh, I've done, uh, work at Children's Healthcare for Atlanta for like seventeen years, and at this point in my life right now, it leads me back to servicing, um, our community and such to whereas, um, dealing with the homelessness situation, uh, individuals need a place concretely called home. And I asked the most high to use me as a tool in these situations to, uh, be used. And along with that, meeting with Dr. D, um, we've, uh, come across these housing situation here where you could take, uh, trailers, uh, four different type of prototypes and have affordable housing. If not affordable housing, you might be wanting to purchase a home, I want to move into a new venture, uh, do some new things here, and with the, uh, uh, econ housing, uh, like you say, the materials are being upgraded to where, uh, you don't have what we used thirty, forty years ago. This is gonna promote everything towards the future of our housing, hopefully, in America and throughout the world. And would love to have the city of Stonecrest on board to initialize this project. Um, we have a large percentage of people out here with a great need. Like you say, uh, it's like there's six degrees. Like you say, it's like there's six degrees of separation being of individuals, young and old, who have a definite need. And the first need that we can help them meet is housing. Thank you.
I could go on, but I'm not. So I would like to open the floor up to any questions. We can talk about financing and, and, and what it costs to do everything. But, you know, over the last 12 years, when I started this journey, I didn't just start it three years ago. I started in 2012. And I've just waited patiently for things to align. But what I'm really looking for is people's hearts to align. Because if you can, you have no idea what it's like to be out in the cold and watch tears come down somebody's eyes and all you can do is watch. Everybody has a different mission. I worked with Senator James for 10 years and wrote legislation and learned how to write all of those things. So that when I came to do something, I knew not only the political process, but I also studied in the real estate field and project management to learn how to be the best I could be to serve the greatest and the least in the kingdom of God. And at the end of the day, this is what this is all about. And we had a meeting with city of, I've been meeting with, we met with our state legislators. I just recently, about a month ago, met with the city of South Fulton that have on board. It's going to happen and I want it to happen before they start, the World Cup comes and they start dumping homeless people and unsheltered people and our unhoused people in places where a solution could have been started. They're going somewhere. We just want them, if they come to the city of Stonecrest, that someone is here already, a task force is here already to help with that situation. So, any questions?
Ms. Clark.
Any volunteer? No, I'm just.
There appear to be more than one class of unhoused. And the units you're providing here appear to be an excellent solution to a particular class. And that class we probably never see on our streets, but there's another class that we do see on the streets quite a bit. And I doubt if they would be able to even afford this. We're looking for a solution to taking care of those who might have mental challenges. And some of them, I don't want to say they are content to panhandle in the streets, but they spend a lot of time doing that and they're very artful at it. So I, I, you know, I'm trying to separate them. I know you might not want to, but we, we appreciate that there's a place for these type of units. And the city is sensitive to it and we're looking at our zoning to accommodate some of this type of development. And we are already pretty much on board, but that other element, and I know it's not necessarily their fault, but there is a element that needs some assistance with some mental challenges.
That's the wraparound services. One of the things that I cautioned the mayor is don't provide housing unless you provide the services for mental and emotional well-being. I mean, you can't get around, around that because if you lived on the street like that, no offense to anybody, but you, there is a mental instability that comes along with living fear, fear and flight all the time. And so, yes, but most, and let me tell you something, that, that is double sword. Because as I got to know quite a few of my guests, I call them guests now, they have to stay on medication to get certain resources just to survive on the street. So if they're housed, whether you buy, you lease an old motel, and, and that's what the mayor did. He put them in a hotel, Motel 8, for eight, six months. And then they transition into housing. So in those six months, there was this opportunity for them to start transitioning for those that were willing and able. So you, in order for them to come into their right mind, you have to put a process in place that allows them to start at point A so they eventually can go into their own, whether it's a 200, 400, or 1,200 square foot unit or housing situation, you have to help them through that process. What I'm looking at is there is enough individuals, humanitarians and grants to be able to fund the project. So when they come, it's not a matter of them coming in to, 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 to rent. It's, it's the, it's the housing that the city of Stonecrest or any county owns so that those that are on the street have a platform and a process in place where they can come off the street. But most of them cannot come off if, if they, they allow them to have certain resources because they're taking the medications that Big Pharma gets paid. There's a lot of money being made off the, the unsheltered community. So when you start taking them off, I was at a White House summit this past year. Biden had a White House summit on hunger and homelessness and everybody was there talking about how difficult it was. But everybody was getting paid to continue just to feed them and keep them on the street. So, you know, when you look at, when you're on both sides, especially on the grassroots side of it, I'm looking at, yes, there's resources that allows them to stay there. But the other side of it, as a, as a county, you also have to provide the remedy for those that are tired of being here and want to be over here. So you become that middleman, that, that, that mediator between the ones that are in that situation and the ones that want to come out. Because I can guarantee you, there are more that want to come out. But who's providing the platform or the launchpad for them to do it?
Okay. All right, you do bring a lot to the table and we're probably gonna have to have you back for another session.
I am a president of the city of.
Yes. You've sat through our budget discussion, so you know our resources are limited. But there are things that we can consider and we will have a chance to discuss it because budget preparation is coming up.
Can I make one suggestion, but pardon you? When the mayor, he had $5 million to do the 40 units. And he said, Ms. Clark, I can't do that. I said, yes, you can. I said, you're the mayor. You can do it. He did it. Right after that, they gave him $60 million. He has untold, unlimited wealth now to do affordable housing because he did one thing. He got it done and he did an excellent job in the model.
That's why I said, we need to talk to you some more.
Okay. Thank you so much. I, my, you have my, I, I apologize. This was supposed to be printed out on landscape and it was printed out on the portrait, so a lot of things got cut off. But Councilwoman Washington can send you all the information via.
We already have it.
Okay.
She's done it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. So we're pretty much, I was just trying to present the, what we can do ASAP to try to take care of some of the things that we need to when it concerns the unhoused and then looking in the future on what we can do, what our options are. So I thank Ms. Cowie for bringing clarity to the constituents about just how much what we are doing, what we can do now with the parameters under the code enforcement. And then Ms. Clark about what we can do in the future. So. Thank you. I'm actually done. Mayor Protim.
Thank you very much and I'm sure you will be the champion of this initiative. Okay, our next item on the agenda is for discussion. And that's the EV charging station project update. Mr. McCoy.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protim, Mayor Council. I'm here tonight to provide an informational update on the city's work to bring EV charging stations to the city of Stonecrest. As you may recall, we've brought this project, we introduced it at two previous TIPS meetings, one in April and one in May. Since that time, we have continued to try to refine our approach with Georgia Power and EnviroSpark. So we would recommend participating in the Georgia Power Make Ready program. This program provides all the necessary infrastructure to build out on the utility side at no cost to the city. And the delivery model that we're recommending is using EnviroSpark. They've been identified as a potential sole source partner to install, own, operate, and maintain the chargers at no cost to the city. Under this model, the city avoids both upfront capital expenses and ongoing operations and maintenance costs. The proposed sites include City Hall and Browns Mill Recreation Center. They meet the zoning requirements. Both locations have at least 100 parking spaces. So we've checked that box. And they're both visible, high-demand locations to serve both the public and the city. The city attorney, Ms. Thompson, has reviewed the agreement. EnviroSpark accepted our red lines and staff is prepared to recommend approval of the project at the next appropriate council meeting. So I have to give you a disclaimer tonight. Tonight's item is for informational purposes only. The city has not contracted with EnviroSpark. We are exploring participation in Georgia Power's Make Ready program and EnviroSpark is under consideration as a potential turnkey vendor. No council action is being requested tonight. So unfortunately, the Georgia Power representative could not be with us tonight. However, we do have Mr. Michael Calhoun with EnviroSpark. He's here to answer any technical questions you may have. That basically concludes my update. We expect, expect to bring back the formal recommendation for approval at an upcoming meeting. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any question you may have at this time.
Thank you very much, Council.
Mayor Protim.
Councilwoman Farnes.
Just to give a reminder to council and just a bit of kudos to Deputy City Manager McCoy for remembering kind of the intense discussion we had during our, during our April and May TIPS meeting on environmental charging where we expressed and we're counsel, well, committee slash counsel gave the, gave the recommendation to actually go with a contract model versus taking on the service ourselves. So just want to say thank you for remembering, kind of for remembering that and providing that update to us. And so that, that, that was primarily what I wanted to say, just kudos on that and thank you so much for, for providing that.
You're welcome, Council.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Well, Tim, and I heard you loud and clear, Deputy Director McCoy, that there's a technical guy here and I don't know if my question is technical, but it's legal. I know you said Attorney Thompson already looked at, did you say that?
I did.
So where it says, can the city get out of the agreement? And I'm down doing some numbers down here where it says for convenience, city can terminate anytime with 30 days' notice, but must pay liquidation damages. 150 per plug, time the months remaining in the eight-year term. That's all right? That's standard legal? I mean, kind of okay? It just seems kind of, first of all, okay, how many we talk, you want me to stop and wait?
No, miss.
Should I? Okay. How many plugs we gonna have? Do we talk about that?
Mr. Calhoun, please come forward.
I'm sorry, I just, okay.
We, we had an expert in the house.
So in the partnership with Georgia Power and their Make Ready program, what's happening in essence is they are taking their funds to help subsidize the cost of infrastructure. So they're gonna be helping out if we need a new transformer. Any conduit or wire that needs to be run from there to the chargers, we're taking over from kind of where they're set up their equipment from the transformer to bring in the chargers and power that. They do require at least six chargers in order for them to cover the infrastructure. From there, we're gonna cover the remainder of the cost for installations, maintenance, and power reimbursement for the city.
Okay, so six.
Six.
Okay, I can do the numbers. Thank you. Okay. I'll buy dollars and cents. I don't have no technical questions. I'll leave that for you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Graves, was that a question for you? Okay, thank you. I guess it's, it's internal. Hours that it would be available, are we 24/7? We just, we are open for business?
The chargers will be up and running 24/7.
Okay. Okay, now it turns to the matter of city manager. Is that gonna be a problem?
Mayor Protim, although they will be available 24/7, I believe they would also have to fall in line with our regular standard business hours.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Because the ones at Browns Mill is at a park that is typically closed at dusk. And of course, City Hall does not have anything to prevent that.
Those are details you gotta work out.
So, I mean, I, I would say from a EnviroSpark perspective, that's not an issue. It's just more so the chargers will be on. Like, we don't turn them off at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, or, you know, there's not a cutoff time. So the chargers would be on as far as how you guys go.
A little closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, as far as how you guys go with access, that would be a decision up to the city. But as far as how we would operate them, they, once we turn them on, they're gonna be on and operational, you know, 24/7.
Okay, good. Any other questions or concerns?
Mayor Protim.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Okay, this is not technical, but do you all have any charges in our area right now?
I believe so. Probably at some apartment complexes or.
So y'all not, y'all don't do Publix?
No, the, the ones at Publix are not us, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Councilwoman Farnes.
And for timeline, should, should this, should this contract pass at September 22nd meeting? What is the schedule for operation? What is the timeline that we're looking at?
This is tentative because a lot of it is going to be dependent on Georgia Power and kind of what they tell us is necessary for power on the property, but I would say within six months.
Within six months?
Yes, sir.
So worst-case scenario, operational fall 2026?
I would say before the fall. But yeah, worst case, I guess you can go with that. By, by the summertime, more than likely way before the summertime, the chargers will be fully up and operational.
Okay, understood. Thank you so much.
Mayor Protim.
And Councilwoman Washington.
Yes, what happens after the eight-year term?
After the eight-year terms, we would either remove the chargers if you no longer want them on the property. We can go into a new term of service or you can purchase them outright if you would like to at a, you know, I'm forgetting the exact term, but you know, at, at a lower price since they would have been on the property for some time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? We thank you very much for the report, sir. Next item on the agenda is for decision. 2025 Street Resurfacing Contract Amendment. Let me just say that in June of this year, we, I believe it was June, we approved a contract for resurfacing our streets in the amount of $2.3 million, whereas we had budgeted $3 million for this particular resurfacing. And on September 7th of 2024, we had a very almost identical situation at a work session where we voted to extend the resurfacing contract amendment. And we're making a request to do the same thing again this year. To present it will be Mr. Harry Carrick Ron and Michael McCoy, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor Protim, Mayor Council. This evening, we're here bringing forward an item related to our FY25 Road Resurfacing Program. As you know, council previously approved a budget of $3 million for resurfacing. And the winning bid came in at just over 2.37 million. That left the balance of about $624,000. That left the balance of about $624,000 within the original budget. Since that time, the city was awarded a supplemental grant through GDOT's Local Road Assistance Program, or LRA. Unlike the annual LMIG program, the LRA funds typically do not require a local match, does not require a local match, which gives us an opportunity to expand our resurfacing scope without additional impact to our budget. The city was awarded just over $790,000 in LRA funds. To maximize this grant, we are recommending a contract amendment of $931,009.62. I handed out a package, a packet, and it would be on the third page of the packet. The quote from Blunt, construction company there currently doing our paving or resurfacing work at this particular time. So this includes the use of the $624,000 already available, plus a temporary SPOSS supplement of about $306,000. Once the LRA grant funds are received, SPOSS will be reimbursed, leaving a balance of nearly $484,000 available for future projects. In addition, we are requesting approval of a $17,618.29 change order to address some shoulder construction work that has already taken place. This cost is well within the $3 million budget and ensures resurfacing work meets safety and durability standards. Although this recommendation allows us to leverage the state's funds, it targets 12 cities, 12 of the city's worst-conditioned roads, based on a CPI data, and preserves SPOSS funds for future needs. So what we're requesting tonight is approval of the contract amendment for $931,09.65 for resurfacing, approve the change order of $17,618.29 for the shoulder work, and to base, to affirm the PCI-based 12-road selection list included in your packet. And that's on page two. This approach makes the most of our state funding opportunity while keeping the city's long-term priorities in mind. And we recommend approval and we'll be happy to answer any questions. I'd also like to state that we have identified SPOSS, but that was based on information received from our city engineer. And I spoke with finance and Madam City Manager prior to the meeting. And so that may or may not be the most appropriate funding source, but during this discussion, perhaps that can be worked through and figured out. But we'll take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you very much. Council, questions?
See who he chooses.
You gotta get a replay on that. It came in a tie, I do believe, so I think I'll go first.
Got to pick who's second.
Mayor Koppel.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The, I got a couple of questions. The, do we have a list of the, is this a list of the roads?
Yes, this is on page two, yes.
Okay. Would these ordinarily be the road that would be next on, let's say, the 2026 resurfacing list? If we're going from worst to best?
Yes, ma'am, it's based on the subdivision PCI.
So these would, certainly, there are no streets listed here that would not have been on the 2026 repaving list?
That's correct. So we created a 2026 paving list already.
Right.
And we pulled these from the top of that list.
Okay, so these are all, I just want to be clear, these all came from the top of what would be the anticipated 2026 resurfacing list?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
In the exact order?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. My other question, I got a couple of them, so hang tight. The LRA grant. The LRA grant. I got a couple of questions around that, but walk with me here. The, if we were going to use SPOSS, and I understand that SPOSS being one fun source of capital improvements is what is recommended here in this packet. Let's say that SPOSS was the fund that we wanted to use for this. Which projects in the FY25 Capital Improvements Budget would essentially be on hold in order to front this $306,000 to use from the SPOSS fund?
We are working on several projects. We have funded sidewalk construction for several sidewalks in the 2026 budget, and also we funded some in 25 budget. And we have not completed any sidewalk construction after we did the Covington Highway Sidewalk and Brownsville Sidewalk. The next project will be Farrington. That is the next one we are going to be constructing. And we will have a reimbursement for that also from DeKalb County. So we have, you know, sidewalk projects is the one we'll be touching, the money coming from for this one.
Okay, so I want to restate that. You're saying that the $306,000 and some change, $307,000 would be, and I'm using layman's terms, borrowed from these sidewalk projects that we have not started yet?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and do you, so, and you're saying excluding Farrington?
The sidewalk is one of the projects that we will be touching. There are other projects, you know, we have been working on several projects to be constructed based on our progress so far, based on, you know, we didn't have staff in several positions for a long time. So we are just trying to start, you know, getting those RFPs out. And, you know, we haven't started any projects yet. So one of the projects that we can use the money is sidewalk projects. And there are several other projects also we haven't started, and.
Right, well, that's why I'm asking, which, which projects would be affected by using this $306,000 to supplement this 900? Which projects are those that are going to be affected?
I don't know whether I would call it be affected because we have allocated sidewalk construction amount. And that.
Well, it's affected because it's not budgeted for, right? I mean, it's affected because it's not in the resurfacing line, is what I'm saying. So this 300 and some thousand, I understand, is in a line for sidewalks, right? That we have not started work on, totally get that. But they're affected because they're not, that money is not funded in the repaving line. It's funded in the sidewalk line. So I get it, it's sitting there, we haven't started the project yet. Why not use the sidewalk money to fund the repaving project until we get reimbursed from the grant and then we'll move that money over there? I get the concept, but that's what I wanted to know. What projects, essentially, are we delaying, deferring, affecting by taking the 300,000 from another line and moving it to the repaving line? So you're saying sidewalks?
That is one of the projects. And then there is, we have funded for emergency projects also. I don't have the amount in front of me, but there is.
It's like 400 and some thousand, I don't have it in front of me either, but I think it's 400 and some thousand.
That's correct, ma'am, so, you know.
So we're going to try to use, you're thinking about using some money from the emergency line, which I would already tell you, that's probably not a good idea. But using some money from the emergency line and then using some funds from the sidewalks line to essentially move to the repaving line.
Funded for, temporarily funded for the repaving, that's correct.
So a couple of things there before I move to the next one. Moving from one line to another is a budget amendment, by the way. So if this 300,000 is coming from any line other than repaving, that's a budget amendment to the capital improvements budget. And it sounds like, obviously it is, because otherwise we wouldn't be here if it was in the repaving line, right? So I just wanted to make sure that we understand that this is a budget amendment, really, no matter where it comes from. And then this, the LRA grant. What is the expected timeline that we think to get those funds in that would, that would now go back to or go into sidewalks and emergency? Where we're taking the 300 from, I'm assuming that's where we would put the LRA. So where, when do we expect that that would come in?
As soon as we submit the audits, we'll start getting those checks one by one, so.
Okay, so this, okay, so, all right, that's next fiscal year?
Hoping we'll get some, you know, as soon as we submit the 2022, we should get, start getting those funds to us.
Okay. Which we anticipate certainly having done. We're working very rigorously to have that one and the next one completed by the end of the year.
That is about $1.3 million. We'll get one, we submit those two.
Okay, so I guess I'll say four to six months.
That's a reasonable estimate, yes.
All right, but now we're in another fiscal year, by the way. We're at the end of this one, and that would put us into another.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we would be refunding the 25 line with funds received in '26. Follow me? We got, okay, so we got some, some work, okay, all right. All right. The, I remember in a meeting, I went back and watched the meetings, but I remember there was a conversation about, and not this change order that's here, this 17,000, but there was a conversation about some other adjustment that needed to be made to the current 2025. But then I didn't hear anything else about that. And I'm certain it's not this number because this number was small. Where are we with whatever that was?
Yes, yes, ma'am, so we waited for, we are about 78% complete. It looks like for so far, touch wood, we may not have to come back to the council because the damage was done on District 2. That means that we ended up spending more in those two subdivisions.
Right.
Since we have passed that and made a lot of progress, there's some savings. And I think we have, let's say, we encountered some good roads that we had the best.
Right.
So we keep daily tally on the tickets. And then I don't know whether I'm going to have to say that now, but we're in a good shape on that right now as we speak, as of last Friday.
Okay, so you're saying that at 70%, 78% completion on the 2025 repaving list, that you feel comfortable that we'll get to 100% without having any other? I hate to use the word issues, but for context, sometimes we have a score for the road, and then they go in and try to repave, and there's no subsurface, and there's just issues, and we have to rebuild the road, which costs more than just repaving it. So you're saying that at 78% of completion on the 2025 paving list, from 78 to 100, you don't anticipate having any issue, having any of those challenges before us?
Yes, ma'am, so in addition to that 78%, we have already milled Cary H. Lane that was done. It's in good shape. And then we are also milling the subdivision in District 5, which has a larger, which is Gina, Aga, and all those areas that looks good. And then so we, I would say, we, even though we have completed 78%, we have milled up to 90% of the road so far, except one large, small subdivision. We have milled everything, those look good. We did not encounter what we encountered in the two subdivisions, so.
Okay. The, for, just so folks who are listening know, we typically save or anticipate that we will have some issues, some challenges during repaving, which costs a little bit more than what the anticipated bid or quote was. So we typically wait till we get to a certain point in that paving completion so that we know, are we going to have to spend money or not? I'm just the mayor, I apologize, am I talking too long?
Go ahead, go over here, just the mayor.
The only one who voted at large, and yet I have the least amount of time to talk. Amazing. And yet so much to contribute to our conversations. So we typically wait until we get to a certain point of completion so that we know if we have some funds in order to extend the list that Mayor Protem is asking for. We typically wait till we get to a certain point to do that. So you're, I'm just reiterating that you feel like we've got about 90% of the milling done, so we know that there's probably not going to be any challenges on subsurface levels. Otherwise, we would need to wait to ensure that we have the funds in case we run into something, which is the point I was trying to get to, Mayor Protem. For all those who are not experts on paving and road rating analysis, that if we were to expend now what we think is left over from the $3 million that was budgeted and the 2.3 that the bid came in at, if we were to expend that and make a contract amendment to add roads, and then we do run into something in the current list, now you've used the funds that were in that line to take care of that thing. So that's why I was asking that. I wanted to ensure that I knew what percentage of completion and comfortability we were at to say, sure, let's go ahead and use that 600,000 on a different set of roads because the current set of roads won't need it. Because what will you do if you do need it? And you've already budgeted to spend it or voted to spend it somewhere else? What will you do? The emergency fund is for emergencies across capital improvements, not just paving. For instance, Pinola Shoals. We use many, many budget amendments to continue to help ensure that Pinola Shoals project, after the emergency hurricane that came through and the emergency storms that came through, we funded that project three or four times with emergencies. So when you start using emergency funds, that is for an entire budget, by the way. It's not for paving. That's why I keep reiterating that capital improvements budget is not SPOSS. It's not repaving. It is a fund that has multiple revenue sources. The emergency fund, the emergency line, by the way, take account of this percentage, is what, 400 and some thousand dollars? Of a total what out of a capital improvements budget? What's our total, look at you, what's our total capital improvements budget? How much? 11 million, and we budget 400,000 for emergencies. It's a drop in the bucket. So I'm just, I'm just checking boxes, pardon me, pardon me. I'm just checking boxes to ensure that when we make said decision, that we understand all the implications around it. And everybody may be satisfied and we're all fine. But, you know, I wouldn't be me if I didn't ask the questions to make sure I understand what the implications are for this said decision. Point being, though, my strongest point is that because it's not in the repaving line, anywhere you take the funds from would need to be a budget amendment to the capital improvements budget in order to put it there. So I'll yield, Mayor Protem, let you, let you handle your meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Grimes.
And thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Now, Mr. Harry.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we've been talking about having or being excited about the potential to have some funds left over after the original set of roads are paved, yes? We've been talking about that for.
Yes, ma'am, so.
The numbers, yeah, because it was three and then we said 2.3, so we've been looking at six something. Is that that 624, 145, 90?
That's the number that.
Hold right there, hold right there, help me so that I can understand. And, you know, I understand a little bit differently than maybe some others up here. If we have the 624 and the LRA money does not need a match, why are we talking about moving something from sidewalks? Just answer, stay right there and answer that for me now, because I can't move without that.
The discussion is about, we have the contract amendment for 900-plus thousand dollars. And the question Mayor was asking, where is that 900 is coming from? We all know that 600-plus is already there. Her question was, where is the balance? Where are you going to pull that from? That was the question she was asking. Her question was, where is the balance? Where are you going to pull that from? That was the question she was asking.
Didn't? Did not you say? That we had 790,000?
That money is not in the bank yet. That's the whole discussion about.
So, so, so here's, here's, so the issue is, because we have this 900. Number that we're trying to match, because that's what you think is going to. Be needed for the additional roads? Help me understand it.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So that's what that is?
That contract amendment to pave.
Okay.
The worst condition streets in two subdivisions is going to cost us additional 900 and plus thousand dollars. And the balance we have from the budgeted amount of $3 million is 600 plus thousand dollars.
Right, 624.
So we are trying to bridge that gap of 900 plus to the 600 plus. That's what the whole discussion is about. And then she was asking, where are you going to pull that money from?
So you don't have the 790 yet, you say?
Once that 790 comes to us, we don't need to be talking about anything.
Okay, so when is the 790 coming?
That is after we submit all the audits to the, the state, we'll have that money.
Okay, so the three, mm-hmm, okay. I might have some more questions. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. But everything should be okay, because if you get it back, we can put it back where it was.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so why are we talking now? Why are we doing all this talking?
Mayor Protem.
I'm not finished, sir.
I apologize.
Why, why, why are we doing all this talking? Like, we can't get this done. We need to get these, you know, that's a staple item. For people to be able to leave their homes and, and travel well and come back well, that's a staple item. Nobody likes to hit bumps and bruises, and I'm excited about the pavement always, about the resurfacing, always. So I don't want us to present like this is an issue and we on shaky ground if we not on shaky ground. We know we got the money, it's coming, what, what, let's not, I don't, I don't like the. I don't like the tone and the tenor that's going out like. It may not happen. It's gonna happen because everything, call it what you want to, amendment, movement, whatever you want to meant. We're gonna get this done because we have the funds to get it done. We're gonna get the money. Let's just. Let's just get the dates and tell the folks and get it done. So, okay, I'm through. I'm off, I'm, I'm done now.
Councilwoman Phi.
So, and I, and I apologize, I missed the, I missed a bit of the mayor's discussion on this. And Legal, please correlate for me. I have no problem with moving any dollars from the emergency line and then put, and then putting it into this. My only question is, to make this, to move budget items in between the budget, when do we not need a resolution? And Legal, check me on that. Are we, are we required to have a resolution to change line items or change funding pieces?
If we're moving, thank you, Councilmember Phi, if we're moving money. And defunding essentially one project to fund another project, we'll need legislation for that to take place.
Okay, and so at this point, we wouldn't be able to take action on that piece tonight without legislation?
We, we need, yeah, we need legislation with kind of some clear. I mean, I'm hearing the discussion kind of being parsed out now. We just need some legislation with. Some clear movement of where that money is going to be coming from and going to in order to fund this project.
Is that not a drafted resolution?
We have a draft, we just don't have. I guess we need the, we need like the number, like we, we need everything kind of, we don't have, we're, we're pressing it out now, but we don't have it yet.
Have we not done this before? You have a drafted resolution and you plug the numbers in as we move along here?
I, I, I don't know if I would feel comfortable doing that without the public seeing it first. Again, I, I'm in support of moving, moving dollars out of emergency. And then supplementing this even with some of our, our surplus. But we do have to go through the proper procedure to do that. I'm okay with coming back to a special call to accomplish that. And I can clear my schedule this week to make that happen. But that is a fundamental step that we have to pass. And again, I understand the timing on this is so important. And that's why I'm willing to open my schedule up this week to make that a special called if necessary. But without that piece, I don't. Without that piece and the public having a chance to digest this, I don't know if I can. In good conscience, support that.
Well, this is being played out in the public now. Let me say, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Is Councilwoman, Councilwoman McGrady, you have a? Okay, thank you. Let me. Bring clarity to one thing. And that is that this list of streets that have been identified. Do not necessarily belong to any particular year. In the event, was my understanding, now I'm trying to get clarity on that. In the event we had known. Exactly what the bid was going to be once we finish it. Might some of these streets have been included into 2025?
This, this is actually when, when the letter from G-Rod came in June. You know, we have to apply before a certain date. So what we did was, we went to that list of roads from worst to. Good, and we pulled the, the roads from the top of the list and put it in the application.
Projecting what we thought would be enough to cover the contract. That's what I'm trying to understand.
We did not, we didn't think about the contract or anything like that.
Okay.
When the letter came, the mayor received the letter from G-Rod saying that you have 790,000 dollars. And then we went ahead and entered the roads. Immediately, and then we, we, we met the deadline to submit the road list or application. Mayor signed the letter, I submitted this, and they received the letter.
I think you answered a different question, but okay.
Yeah, and then, and then we pulled that, when we did that. We pulled that out of that list from worst to, worst to good. And then, you know. It has to, you know, it's our money, 790,000 dollars, and then those, these roads are in that application. So at some point, we have to figure out the way to pave those streets because those are in the application. If not, you know, we even put it in the timeline. In every road, they, they ask the street name from to length. And when are you going to let this contract out? So in that application, we put in, end of August, we are going to let this, let it out. That's the application. So that's what we are trying to meet this, try to get that LMAE LRA money. We have done this every year. When the letter comes in, we put in the application, we go and do this.
Yeah, could answer a different question, but let me, let me ask it this way. Since we've been paving, resurfacing roads. Have we ever deviated from the PCI scores in terms of choosing which roads?
I'm not, I won't be able to answer that before 2020.
Since you've been here.
Yes, no, no, we have not done that.
Okay, good. Just want to make that clear, because that was an implication. I didn't like it. Let me, no, not right now. Let me, well, Mayor Protem has the floor.
Yeah, but you could be a little more respectful when you say that.
Okay.
All right, mutual now.
Harry. We've calculated how much fun, how much funding would be left over. Should our finances stay as is with our current paving? Is there any projection as to how many roads we could pave? If we only use that which would be left over? I believe it's 600 and how much? 600 and some thousand? Is there a projection, would you just lop off the ones from the bottom? How would that work?
Yes, sir, I, I try to do that and see, but it is going to be one full subdivision and, and then it is going to cut in the middle of the second subdivision. That's why we went all the way to the end to get that number.
And that's why you need the numbers above the 670?
That's correct, sir, yes. And, and, and this is all again, this 900 and something is the projected. Oh, estimated amount. And then once the final payment is made.
Okay.
Yeah, that's different.
And pointed out another date as I opened. It was on September 7, 2024, that we made this exact same adjustment. In this room at a work session, so this is nothing new. And we didn't go through all of this. We voted, made the adjustment. For the extension of the contract. And all went well. I'm a bit baffled as to why such an issue in 2025. That being said, I have more, and I will yield and say to the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Hopefully last year, we probably had all this discussion in meetings and things, and we were able to come to the dais already with consensus. Which is likely why this is a little different, because this didn't happen. The meat, the massages making didn't happen before we got here. And Harry, I want to make sure that you answered Mayor Protem's question accurately when you said that we have not deviated from the list. And I know it's certainly never our intention to deviate from the list, but I want to say that we are in some litigation now. From a decision made to deviate from the list. Or maybe we just, actually, I think we just finished that litigation, did we not? From a road repaving. Situation? Don't, it's okay.
I'm not sure whether that is for the deviation of the list, I'm not sure.
It's, it's definitely a deviation from the contract. Which is a deviation from the list.
No, that's a difference.
Yeah, uh-huh, it's definitely a deviation, right? It was money spent. Because there wasn't money in the fund, and then we spent the money before we, right, yeah. So that, it was similar, for sure. We don't want to, I obviously don't want to.
Want to go into that.
No, I don't, and, and I'm not, I don't plan to, but my point is, my point is. When things happen, you don't repeat them. So what we should be doing is ensuring that we're not repeating mistakes of the past, regardless if it was the council, the vendor. Or any other person, that we don't make the same mistakes twice. So you were referring to a prior year's process, I wanted to clear that up, and then I also wanted to make sure that we were. Transparent in our conversation about whether we had done this before.
No one has any implication about that was a problem with last year's contract.
I guess Mayor Protem can cut the mayor off, but the mayor can't cut Mayor Protem off.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Finish?
No, but you were speaking, so I decided to respect and stop. May I?
I'm pondering it. Please proceed.
The, we, we were discussing. Contract, I'm sorry, you were discussing resolution and budget amendment when I walked back in. Hopefully, even, even if a resolution was prepared for tonight. If it did not include the actual budget amendment to go along with it, as you recall, whenever we make a budget amendment. It has a resolution and that resolution usually has an exhibit, and that exhibit displays exactly what is transferring. Moving from one place to another, which fund and the amount, and it shows that. So I'm hopeful that if we were to vote, or you all were to vote tonight, that that one has already been given to you. And two, that it was out for the public to see. If not, then the budget amendment would not follow the budget amendment protocols as our policies and state law outline. So I just wanted to ensure that. We were aware that it's not just the resolution, it would also be the actual amendment that would need to be attached to it. Last but not least, the 2026 list, well, let me ask it this way, the, let's say the council voted tonight. You may have already answered this, so just say it one more time for me. Let's say they voted tonight. Would these streets be completed before paving season is over in this calendar year?
It'll start immediately after you just vote for it. Yes, it'll start.
It would start the same time that we're finishing the 25? The current 25?
Yes, so they will immediately bring, start these roads after they've finished the last subdivision, so it's going to happen.
Oh, so it's not simultaneous, it'll just pick up at the end of the current?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought you were saying it was simultaneous at first.
And we are hoping, if the council vote today. We're hoping that we'll be done with 25 contract plus this amendment by end of October.
By the end of October, okay. Ms. Gaines, obviously, depending on what the council decides tonight, would affect our 2026. Capital improvement proposed budget that we are going to present in 48 hours. So we would obviously need to reduce, we need to make some changes. If the council moves this list up today, Harry, we would need you to kind of be on call tomorrow. So that we can try to get some of those adjustments made for the proposed, because this will obviously. Change our proposed capital improvements for 2026.
Adam Cede, was that a signal? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. I think, Harry, did you mention that? Is there an additional 17,000 dollars that's for a change order to this as well?
That's in that same packet that the deputy city manager presented, yes.
So is it included in the, so it's really, is it going to be one amendment to the contract, not two essentially?
Two. There's a change order for the 17,000 dollar, approximately 17,000 dollar shoulder work. What was it, hill veil?
Yes.
Yeah. That's been performed.
Not yet, not yet, you're waiting for this to get.
In addition to the 931.
The mic is, the mic is off.
It has to be too, because our policy says that change orders are treated with a specific process, different than the contract amendment. I mean, it's technically an amendment, but the contract has stipulations, well, you know, you wrote it, but for the change order. So. One-ish. So we need two resolutions, right?
Mayor Protem, I apologize.
Councilwoman Phi.
I apologize, Mayor. All right. City manager Scruggs. Is that 17 not under your signature authority? Or is that similar, is that a different policy when it comes down to change orders? Still learning it.
That is, that is under my signature authority, however. That was one of my questions back to our engineering team is, because you're doing that, is that reducing? Or, I'm sorry, is that adding to the 931,000? Because then that would be. An additional amount if I was to approve that without you all, like, let's say that the work was already done, but Harry, you're saying that it hasn't been, right? Okay, I just want to make sure you said that again. The work hasn't been done, so. If I had have signed that, then you really wouldn't have 931,000, you would have not, it would be 931. I'm sorry, you wouldn't have, wouldn't be looking for 306, you'd be looking for 306. Plus this 17,000, because had I signed that, even though. It was said that it was under my signature authority, you all would not have known that I signed off on that, because it wouldn't have come to you.
Okay, so, and I appreciate you for going with the more transparent process.
Also, the contract does stipulate change order requirements.
Appreciate, appreciate you on that. So, council, I think that the appropriate method to get this done is. Harry, what's the, Harry, what's the timeline? I know that we have, we have the guys in the area right now. What's, what are we looking at in time, in terms of? Expedition to make to actually be able to get it done within the paving season? What's the latest that you can wait?
We can wait for a week or two.
Week or two?
Yes.
Can you wait? Two weeks for the 22nd? Are they still going to be in the area by then?
I need to check with them because they will be paving Carriage Lane tomorrow. They'll be paving Carriage Lane tomorrow, and then they're milling Gina Aga today. And they will finish that and move to the last subdivision Friday.
Is there any way to possibly? Would it break our contract if we were to ask for a delay to add that, to give us the time to approve this change order at our next council meeting? Would that be an issue?
I need to ask them. I don't think. They don't mind delaying a week. I don't think they're gonna, they're gonna.
Give them a three-day vacation, something, and I'm, and I'm trying not to, I'm trying not, I'm. I'm so sorry, I'm trying to find the best way to do this. We, we could do that, we could have a. We, we could do that, we could have a special call, I'm okay with that. Next week, or, I'm okay with that, but you say, um, I'm okay with having a special call, but could you get that timeline and let us know?
That's if the council agrees to that.
I, I can certainly say I don't feel comfortable voting for a budget change without a resolution, and I, and I apologize, but that's, that's a, that's a piece of that. We have, is there, is there a way that we can get that time, is there a way that, you said a week and a half, a week, we can have to two weeks?
Yes, yes, sir, we can, we can ask them, definitely, ask them, I'll call them after this meeting.
Okay, Attorney Thompson, what is the fastest time that you can get us a resol, two resolutions for these change, for these change orders? That can be publicly with, with the budget amendment, that can be publicly distributed before, publicly distributed? Tomorrow, tomorrow, 5 o'clock, tomorrow, 12, what the, um, I'm so sorry, but I got to be specific on this. Okay, so you can get it done, you can work to with them, can you get it done by Wednesday or Thursday? Okay, let's do Thursday. So we get this done Thursday. Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Grimes, can you work with me to get a special call meeting on next week?
I think we perhaps need to deal with what's on the floor right now and see where it goes, and if that doesn't work, then we'll look for alternatives.
I, I, I can respect that. Okay. I will, I will respect that decision and ask that we have conversations after, but I will just mark that I will, I will make myself available every day except the 15th of next week. I withdraw, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Not everyone on this dais has the same level of expertise when it comes to understanding the financial workings of this organization. And we turn to our finance director, to our city manager, and the mayor makes herself very much available, and she offers, I think, great insight. But we really look to the finance director and our city manager for those directions. Initially, we were told that things were in place, and we were told it might not be in place, and they told it might be in place. Now, and it has gone back and forth, as to whether or not things were in order to make this happen. But what I am convinced of is that this needs to get done. It has happened in the past, and I think we're following a very similar path, almost an exact path, and it baffles me as to why there are such complications this time around, but it is what it is. And I think some valid questions have been raised. The question is, how quickly can we resolve them? Can we put a motion on the floor to proceed with the corrections to follow, is that legitimate? And bypass the need for a special call, if a special call is needed. So I think those are things that we need to concern ourselves with, and bottom line is, we want to see the project go forward. Funding is there, it's just a matter of in which category and how do we put it in the right bucket? That's what the professionals are for. You know, I can pick out some numbers and tell you to put it here, put it there, but again, that's not my lane. I just want to see the project done. Road's bad, you guys get them fixed, how do we make it happen? And soon. So, that being the case, what we had on the agenda was street resurfacing contract amendment, and some details to that was provided by our deputy city manager and city engineer. And we expected this to work. And based on the conversations we've had this evening, that's going to be what we need to vote on. Will this work? Will it work this evening, or will it work later? Now, what is your pleasure, counsel?
Mayor Protem, I have some unreadiness, I need to ask another question.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Legal. Do you have this sheet from Deputy City Manager McCoy?
Yes, I just got it, yes.
There are four bullets down at the bottom. You see it highlighted in yellow?
Yes, ma'am.
What can we not do tonight, from a legal standpoint?
Well, if you wanted to, from a legal standpoint, we don't have a second resolution prepared right now for the $17,618.29, so that's not, if we're going to adopt that in another piece, a second piece of legislation, we don't have that ready right now. So we'll just need to have something prepared for that, and then, of course, I know that $931,000 is going to be coming from a couple of different sources, and so, again, I heard the conversation, I just need to have those sources recorded so I can put those, that in the legislation for the 931.
And that's not ready tonight, right? Or is that ready tonight, to tell where this 931, 9.65 cents coming from? Do we have that tonight, because it sounds like the three and the six to me, but go ahead, I don't know where you, do we have that identified tonight, gentlemen?
Repeat the question, Councilwoman?
Attorney Thompson just said, before we can do anything with bullet number one, she needs to know exactly what, what comprises the 931, $9.65. She needs to know where those two sources, three, four, five sources are coming from to make that number. And I asked the gentleman at the podium, Deputy, Deputy City Manager McCoy and Engineer Harry Capricorn, do we know where that's coming from, so that that could be given to Attorney Thompson, so it could satisfy her? I'm trying to figure out what can we do tonight, because you all ask us of something, you ask us for something. And if we don't have to come back, because that 17,000 is well within city managers' purview assignment, we don't have to come back for that, do we? Do we? Do we have to come back for that 17,000?
Just please make sure that in these calculations, I saw, I apologize.
No, please, go ahead.
Just make sure in these calculations, the 17,000 is accounted for in wherever you're deducting.
Wherever they're, okay.
So to answer your question, out of that 931,009.65, 624,145.90, we all know where that is coming from.
That's, that's what's left over from our initial budgeted 3 million, okay?
And then the balance is what we have been discussing, where to take that, the balance from.
Because we can't take anything from the LRA, because we don't have that yet.
That's, that's not, we don't have that in the bank yet, yes.
Does that include the 17,000, though?
No, the 17,000 had to be added to that.
Okay, so the 624,000 needs to be reduced by 17,000?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. So the numbers aren't right. No, no, I'm saying what's left in the, what's left in the fund is 624,000, period, now you're going to take 17 of that, so you need to reduce the 624 by 17,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
And increase the 306 by 17.
You're asking for more than 306, you're asking for 306,000 plus the 17.
17,000, yes.
Right, okay, so we're not ready, counsel, we're not ready. Not only are the numbers not correct, we also have not identified exactly what line in the capital improvements budget you are going to fund, just 306 plus the 17.
That's why I'm asking Legal to tell us, what, what can we do, because I want the public to be clear, as, as Councilwoman Fai spoke about, want them to understand what is happening, but I also want to make sure that we don't need to come back, and we don't have to come back. If it's something that we can do, let's do it, if it's not, just say that.
Councilwoman Grimes, we don't have the contract, to have the contract amendment. You, you can't vote on a contract amendment with no contract amendment.
You're missing my point, Mayor, all I want to do is hear it from Legal. I already know what question I'm asking. I know the answer to the question, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that Legal opines and tells us that we cannot do this, so that if anybody out there is asking why they can't do or can do, I want to make sure it's on record. And I always do that, so, thank you, thank you.
And before we leave, we need to make sure it is perfectly clear as to what is about to happen, so we can make it happen and get the streets paved, okay? So what else do we need?
Well, I mean, I think that there's, again, some clarification that needs to be, that needs to happen as far as the finances is concerned. So as, if that's parsed out, again, we always can prepare, you know, documents post approval. If you need us to prepare a contract amendment to go with it or a resolution, that can happen. So we, I think the big question on the table is just how the finances are going to be parsed out.
They got to identify it.
Well, we have to have an agreement on it, once we identify it or suggest it, I mean, I made a suggestion, tell that gentleman, let's go, that's not my lane, but, so you can't do that. Okay, so, but what can we do, and that's what we're getting to here now, is that what can we do, because it's going to get done.
So Mayor Protem, can, can you give us, and when I say us, I don't mean me, staff, the opportunity for the city manager's office, the engineering office, deputy city manager, and finance to sit down, get these numbers clean first, and then come back and say, here's the recommendation where it can come from, and this is the sausage making that we should do before you get to the dais.
I know what I just said.
I said it 20 minutes ago, you just repeated it in better language, but this, we can't do any of this today and make it legitimate. You don't have a contract amendment in front of you, we don't even have the numbers together, and we haven't decided where it's coming from, but let the staff go back and get all this and bring you the recommendation.
See, I was led to believe that it had been done, that it hadn't been done, but it had been done, so we want to make sure that when it gets done, that it's done.
Well, I think we went backwards, I think you want departmental level first versus starting at the city manager's office and going down. But if we start at the city manager's office, I guarantee you she's going to ensure that department down, it will be done.
Okay, folks, it's time to, well, this is a work session, so we're going to work through it tonight, and when we come back, we'll be ready to skip discussion and just go.
So do you, do, are you going to give city manager the directive to do what we just said about them meeting and getting stuff cleaned and clear and presenting to us, you going to do that, Mayor Protem?
I think they got, I think everybody has their marching orders right now, and it will happen. City manager, affirmative? And you, are you in charge of finance director?
I am not, but I will say for, for.
You're working with the finance director, I'm sure.
We work together.
Yes.
But I, um, yes, but I'll have a more detailed conversation with the, you and the clerk's office about whether the questions were asked about funding for this project.
Yeah, true, no denial here. Okay, this was on the agenda for decision. We need to take action to either approve it as on the agenda, deny it, or defer it for another meeting.
Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman Graves.
So we're having a meeting on Wednesday, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So could we just do a special call meeting 15 minutes before that scheduled meeting on Wednesday?
Three of us would be out of town, can, and can we vote virtually?
No.
I don't think so.
There's a quorum present, you, whoever's.
You will make the quorum, too.
Who can be a part of it.
Well, I think our attorney, Ms. Thompson, says she can have it done by tomorrow.
It's, yeah, exactly.
Okay, and? The work is over here to decide where the money is coming from.
Over here between the city manager's office, deputy city manager engineer, and finance, that's where the work is. Alicia, and, and gets paid good for it, and she's a great attorney, will be typing in the information given to her.
And the information she's pending is where the funding is going to come from, correct?
Cleaning up the numbers, where the funding is coming from, and the actual contract amendment, plus the change order.
Okay.
So.
So could we?
So I was going to ask the city manager, is that possible, to have that prepared, so we can vote on it on Wednesday? Because we're making this extremely complicated.
I can work in the morning and let you know by noon where we stand with getting that together, because we have to get with several departments, and I just want to make sure we're clear.
And it has to be advertised.
And it has to be advertised.
All right. We might be finished by then with this meeting.
Um, Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman Fai.
My apologies, Councilwoman Graves, do you, are you done with the floor, I apologize.
Are you?
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am. So, based upon the funding source that we're pulling from, are we all incongr, are, is there concurrents from this council that we are pulling this all from the emergency fund in Sploes, in Sploes, too? This 300, capital, excuse me, capital improvements, thank you, Mayor, are we all in agreement that we are pulling 306,808.63? Excuse me, that we're pulling that, that we're pulling this amount, whatever that amount is, from the, from the emergency fund?
That amount is 324,482.04.
Thank you, Councilwoman Graves, that amount, are we all in concurrence that we are pulling that amount from the, from the emergency fund?
Said we were going to let them do the business first, let, let the folks out there do it, let them do it, and recommend to us, and we can see whether or not we agree. That's, that's how that works, we don't do their jobs, they got to get the numbers right to present to us. And that, I don't think that's being rude, I'm just saying that's what they do, that's, that's their, that's their position, to tell us where the numbers are coming from, when they present it to us, then we can go there, look there, look there, look there, yes, yes, no, question, and then we can make our, we can do our vote.
All right. Okay, well, that's the case, I would recommend, is everyone good with just deferring this item to a special call meeting?
If it's possible by Wednesday.
It's possible to have it done by 5:45 tomorrow. Because if you want a 5:45 meeting on Wednesday, you got to advertise 24 hours in advance, so we got to have it all done and ready to post and on common ground by 5:45 tomorrow. So the city manager said she will let you know by noon how far along they've gotten to be able to post this by 5:45 tomorrow.
Why are we stressing when you know three of us are going to be gone? Yeah, you got a quorum, I get it, but it doesn't mean that we can't be present in the meeting. And so next week is not going to make a break. If we get it done, we, the whole team, get it done in a week, is that a big deal? You said two weeks, Harry, right? You said two weeks for. You said two weeks for notification and all of that stuff to the people. If we get it done next week, is that do, is that okay? I mean, that gives the folks who got to work time, I want to be here. I don't want you to do it Wednesday.
I think Tara's out next week, and so am I.
We can.
Not that you need me, clearly.
We've just confirmed that we can participate virtually and vote. Oh, curses. I thought it was six. But anyway, we are in the mandatory training at 5:45
on Wednesday.
So did we decide that the city council meeting was too long, too far away?
Well, uh, the concern is, uh, it's going to be costly if we let them demobilize and have to re-mobilize the operation. And that's why the question you asked about, are they finished? And I understand that they may not be finished next week. It will be, could be a couple of weeks.
Definitely, uh, they will not be finished by next week, yes.
So if it gets pushed out beyond our return on Monday, you might.
Yes. I mean, I would be virtual, just like you all would be virtual, so would Tara and I would be virtual. It's the same thing.
Yeah, we get one more vote, that's all.
But I don't vote, you don't need me.
Right.
You only need me for a quorum.
Okay, uh, we'll pick a date for a special call meeting if we can agree on what we're going to do. Uh, we'll pick a time to do it, uh, that meets the approval of the majority of this council. So, uh.
I mean, I'm looking at the calendar, Mayor Protem. If you're saying that the paving won't be done by the end of this week, right? That's the 13th. You're saying it'd be done by the following week.
And, but you won't be here, uh, so.
Right, but the meeting.
You do get here.
Well, one, you don't have to, but two.
It's going to be two weeks, then we can wait.
Right, you might, the 22nd is two weeks from now.
Yeah.
So just do it at the city council meeting. If they're going to be done with the paving that they're doing now, the week of the 15th, surely it's not going to cost us a million dollars to wait four days, four or five days to the 22nd. And then hell, come back and find another million. You just found one.
Yeah.
But that gives them time, the time to ask them, it gives us time to work it out. Just let us do it, just. Can you please just let the staff do the job and then come back, even with a recommendation on the earliest date? The earliest week, we can, he can do that too. Call them and see how long they can wait. We can come back with all of that.
And, and your answer is they may not be demobilized by the end of two weeks from today?
I need to make a phone call, Mayor Protem. I will do that when we finish this meeting.
Okay.
Um, um, I don't want to give you something that, without talking to him. And, um, definitely I'll have the answer first thing tomorrow morning or, you know, after this meeting.
All of that comes into play. All right, because, uh, then you have to add another cost for them re-mobilizing. Okay, um, we still have to dispose of this item, and I hear a deferral coming to a special call or city council meeting. And I get a motion to that effect. If, if that is the wish of a member of this council to.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves.
Make motion that we defer this matter until after we have heard from engineer Harry as to a date or a special call meeting period.
Second.
Unreadiness.
Councilmember Fire state unreadiness, please.
City manager Scruggs, um, is that possible that you, finance director and engineer, can have that answer for us, um, by noon tomorrow?
Well, I, I just thought it was interesting that the motion was to, uh, uh, allow the engineer to determine when we would have a special call meeting. That's what I heard, or that was my understanding. And if it's not, was that my understanding?
That is not what, that's not what I said. I said to hear from Harry as to whether these folks can wait until, so that we'll know what time to do a special call meeting or when to do a special call meeting. What you want me to say, city manager, I'll say it.
No, I thought that was a motion to.
Yeah, I wanted to get that clarity as well, but, uh, let's, let's clear it up.
What would be better for me to say? I'll, I'll pull my motion back, and then I'll say it the way so y'all can get things done and it ain't no trouble.
I, I will.
So moved.
My second.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Parliamentarian? Uh, uh, order, please. Um, it is probably moving to second to defer this item to a, uh, special call meeting or city council meeting. Are you ready for the question? There is no unreadiness? All of those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye opposes nay. Sullivan District 1.
Aye.
District 2.
Nay.
District 3.
Aye.
District 4 is aye. District 5.
Aye.
Motion carries for the one. This item is deferred to a special call meeting or the next city council meeting. Whichever is most convenient. Need a break. But anyway, we're on to the last item on the agenda, and that is animal control. Councilwoman Graves, you want to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to have an open discussion regarding, um, animal control. I know this is a service that is currently being handled by DeKalb County, but I wanted to talk through the process. Mainly because I had two constituents that mentioned they were attacked.
It's probably just me, but, uh, you might, we really need.
My mic is on, Mayor Protem.
You know, use your, use your outside voice.
I am speaking into the mic. So let's start over. I want to talk about animal control. I want to actually talk about the process. Like I mentioned, I do know, um, DeKalb County is currently handling, um, animal control here in the city of Stonecrest. But I had two constituents, um, reach out to me, um, because they were attacked, and they was pretty much frustrated with the process because they were redirected between DeKalb County and the city. And that's after the police was notified as far as how to move forward. So I just wanted, I did have a conversation with Attorney Thompson in regards to it. And like I mentioned before, I do know it's a service that's being handled by DeKalb County. But I wanted to talk through the process when someone in the city is attacked by an animal or a dog. How, how is, how does that process work?
Mayor Protem, may I ask a question for clarity?
Mayor Cobble?
Councilwoman Graves, are you asking about the adjudication process? Or are you asking about just from call to service delivery? From constituent call to service delivery?
Service delivery, from call to service delivery. Like, how does that process work? What is in our IGA currently?
I'm not sure who you're directing to. I, I, I mean, I can offer something if you'd like, or I can wait. I can, you want to start, Attorney Thompson?
Going to actually retrieve the IGA. Um, but I think at the current moment, the IGA, um, is not as detailed, um, as it probably needs to be. And we're working to parse out the details of the IGA, um, in terms of animal control with the county. So right now in the IGA, it just, um, and I'm going to pull it up, but it just essentially, um, provides the intent that the county is providing their service. But we're still parsing out details for, um, on the city's behalf. But I think you asked about, um, you know, what happens typically if there's a animal attack of some sort or animal issue, let's call it that. Um, so to my understanding, the county is called to, um, because DeKalb County handles, um, animal control for the city as well as, um, at this moment in time, they also, and animal control also cites, um, violators of animal control ordinances. Um, DeKalb County is tasked with coming to address the issue, dealing with the animal, as well as to cite the violation. And so that typically should, um, happen, um, via the services that DeKalb provides to the city.
So on our website, of course, I know it's redirected to DeKalb County. So after they report that, so after it's reported, do we have anybody at the city to follow it or to make sure that the process is handled correctly? Or if the process is handled at all?
And that might be, maybe the city manager might be able to answer as far as operations is concerned, what takes place when, um, any animal control calls come in for the city of Stonecrest to DeKalb County?
I would, um, defer that to our code enforcement, but they're not here. Um, but our code has a section regarding animal control. Um, but to speak specifically to the operations of that, I cannot.
May I add to that?
Go speak.
Okay. Um, so just like all of our other lines of public safety with the county, um, who obviously provides all lines of public safety, um, the assurance of the performance of that service delivery, it's handled the same way we do it all the other four, I think there are five lines of public safety, animal control being one. Um, so the IGA obviously gives the service over to the county. We all pay our taxes to the county for that service. So animal control and its service delivery, uh, is assessed like every other law, uh, every other public safety service. So it's no different than how we assess police. It's no different than how we assess fire. It's no different, because it's a service delivered by the county and the taxes go to the county, it's under the IGA. So there, there isn't any specific, a person who is responsible for, um, communicating service delivery from the city to the county other than, uh, the folks who meet with the county every month, which is myself and the city manager. Um, the public safety director, this will be a good example of one of their responsibilities, is all lines of public safety in a liaison between the city and the county. Uh, so all lines of public safety, which is why we're not looking for a police chief, we're looking for a public safety director, is because we need a liaison, someone who's responsible for this type of communication, uh, solely responsible for that communication back and forth on service delivery. Now, because we are aware that we have some service delivery challenges, my office and the CEO's office are in constant contact with each other about service delivery on all of our services from the county, including public safety, which includes animal control. And then the city manager's office is obviously having conversations with the COO's office on her level to ensure that we get some continuity there. So we treat it, long story short, just like any other service that the county is being, is delivering, which is being a liaison and trying to get a better service delivery from our IGA. Now, the adjudication process is what Attorney Thompson was referring to, that we're really trying to parse out the details on that adjudication process. And that's important to this discussion because once the citation, once the constituent calls animal control, and animal control shows up, and let's say they write a citation, what we are parsing out is where that citation is heard. Is it heard in the county court? Is it heard in the city court? The city court, if the city court wants it to be heard in the city, then the, the, uh, animal control officers need to be sworn in on our side in order to apply our code. If it's going to be handled in the county's court, then the county applies their own codes because they're sworn in on that side. So that's what we're trying to parse out now in this IGA, uh, amendment. Uh, so it's on the list of amendments, you know, the, the police is number one, uh, the GCIC was number two, uh, and then we had Public Works, which was number three. And then, so we have a list of IGAs that we're working through with the county. Animal control is on that list, uh, just not the first one on the list. We're trying to get police done first. Um, and we're close. I think the commission was reviewing it a meeting or two ago, so we're close on that one, by the way. Uh, but that, that is kind of how that works now. And, and we've talked to the county, uh, myself, uh, Gia, and, um, our, um, attorneys, and I want to say code enforcement, have been in conversation, uh, with our animal control folks, trying to ensure that, one, they're responding to the calls, uh, and two, uh, that they're writing the citation. Uh, and because at the end of the day, both entities want to ensure that our constituents are taken care of. I remember, uh, a few months ago, which is why I really put my arms up about it, um, a constituent came in, uh, with a, a bleeding from their arm. Um, and it was because, uh, animal control, um, would not respond. Uh, and so we immediately got on the phone with the county. Um, the public safety director at the county, Chief Lumpkin, Zach, who you know is the COO, uh, the, um, intergovernmental liaison, uh, who is Martha, and the CEO's office, to ensure that everyone understood from both sides that constituent calls are to be responded to. We will work out the, the adjudication process on the backend, but no one should be without a service, and that service should be delivered. We have a common constituent. So whether it's the county or the city, the constituent is first and foremost. Then we can figure out the government side of it behind it. So we've been working, um, rigorously on that to ensure that service delivery is handled. Uh, but the adjudication process is kind of where we are now in that negotiation, just ensuring if it's going to come to the city, our court is prepared to handle it. The county's code enforce, uh, the county's animal control officers are sworn in on our side, just like I do our code officers. And then, of course, um, they are now, um, implementing our code. Until then, it goes to the county court. They're using the county code, uh, because they're sworn in on the county side. Real long story.
Yeah, may, may I also, um, add for discussion on the matter? If you have an animal that is just noisy, uh, running across my yard, that's code enforcement, right? Now, if the animal threatens or attacks me, that's public safety. So we have two categories here, or are we looking? Yeah.
Yeah, two ones to change.
The only thing I was going to say to that, Mr. Mayor Protem, was essentially, yes, there are, um, a number of kind of, um, rules and regulations that everyone who owns an animal in the city has to abide by in the city's code of ordinances. And I think, um, if, um, that the animal, you know, is under a certain type of control or out of control, I think that's where the animal control comes in. But, um, again, code enforcement can cite, um, cite under the city's ordinances. But to my understanding, animal control, um, works to provide, um, I would say, safety, safety services around animals?
Okay, so that, well, that's why the intergovernmental agreements are so important. But I want to make sure we understand that if someone calls and say, well, the dog is just a nuisance, that's one thing. But the dog is a threat to my safety, that's another category.
Right, because only animal control can pick up the, the dog. So they need to be there to, to do that. Um, and if they, and that's, again, the part of the conversation we're having, if they come to pick up the dog, then they can also cite the, um, any violators of this, of animal control ordinances.
And we have to decide if we want to adjudicate that in the city of Stonecrest or it goes to DeKalb County?
Right, so, yeah, so if, if, um, if DeKalb County picks up the, um, animal and cites, they have to cite using the state law, and it'll go to DeKalb County. But if the, um, if they're sworn into the city's courts, they can use the city's code of ordinances.
Got it. Okay. Uh, in the mic there, Councilwoman. What was that?
Um, Councilmember Graves asked about dead animals. I believe animal control, yeah, animal control will, because the city doesn't have its own animal, um, if the car goes through, it's going to go to DeKalb County, not to code enforcement.
Looking for a singular person responsible for calling all dead animals in?
Repeat the question, because we didn't hear her question.
Her question was, who called?
I just put it on the mic.
Oh, if, if. If enforcement sees it, I would imagine that code enforcement should call it in just like any other citizen would, yeah. They can, yeah. They should call the cab, but yeah, not themselves, but, yes, they can.
Anything else, Councilwoman Graves? And we'll get more on your animal control concerns until this matter is laid to rest. Okay, are you looking for some action, some legislation as a result of what you brought to us? Okay. Okay, well, from that end, yeah, I know the cab kind of picks up dead animals. If they're, yeah, if they're. If they're, yeah, if they're in the public right of way, so you need to pull it close to, within 10 feet of the street. I'm serious, I had a dead pig and they said, they said, drag it to within 10 feet of the curb and they'll pick it up. Otherwise, it's on private property and anybody will not come get it.
And Mayor Protem, that would be the city or the county. I mean, the government would not pick it up if it's on private property, it's got to be in the city or county right of way.
Yeah, within 10 feet of the, right of way.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilwoman Graves, if you want to bring over animal control, that's a taxable service that would require a... Oh, okay, alright.
Okay, then we can revisit again when you're ready. All right, anything else?
Mayor Protem.
Councilman Tha.
For my education, and this might be a question for city ma, for the city manager and, or, and/or the mayor. And thank you, Councilman Graves, for bringing this up. I, I did have questions on where that animal control piece did come from, but are there code enforcement officers on the DeKalb side that are sworn in on our side? Because we can't double tax, you're right. What about animal control officers? Are there like people who are Stonecrest exclusive or representative on that matter? Or other matters on public safety that like would be able to like enforce our codes?
Unlike, unlike police, where there are police precincts and they're established throughout the city, I mean-
Yes, ma'am.
Sort of there being a precinct, it's a similar organization. They have certain folks assigned to certain territories, and Stonecrest would be one of those. And so they are to cover certain areas, just like basically how the, the county delivers every other service.
So in that case, they'd be enforcing their codes, but if we wanted them to enforce our codes, there's not a way that we can swear them in on our, that you couldn't swear them into?
There is a way, it just has to be, the IGA has to be amended to reflect that.
Understood.
Which is what we're talking through.
Understood.
What's the, which government entity is best to do that at the present time? Are we equipped? Are they equipped better? Kind of how, how do we want to do that? Is what we're talking through now with the public safety director over at the county. And then, once we kind of hash out a little bit of that, we'll certainly take it to municipal court and get their opinion about how they feel the court is set up to handle it. And then, once we get all that together, we'll have a recommendation. Police is our number one priority.
Yeah, I appreciate you for that, I appreciate you on that.
So while we're having conversations about service delivery on animal control, it is not going to jump ahead of the police IGA or the GCIC IGA or the Public Works IGA. So we'll continue to talk much about service delivery, but the other four, we all decided, we all, the electeds and the staff, that those other four were priority.
Understood, thank you so much, Mayor Protem, I withdraw.
Council, we used to call them dog catchers, but we moved to catching more than just dogs, so it's animal control now, so... Well, that's why we changed it to animal control. So you won't be offended. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, um, Mr. Protem.
Councilwoman Grimes.
I'm sure by now you all have heard of the tragic arson that took place and took the life of Miss Stephanie Wiley, who was a District Five resident in the hills of Farrington. There's a, it's just a stain, that's just a stain that's, that's out in, in that community, one of my, one of my favorites. Just want to ask everybody, just, when you get home in your quiet time, please say a prayer for that family. Her brother reached out to me to let me know that there's a GoFundMe, but I have not gotten word on how the nephew is doing, the one who had to jump out the window to save his, to save his life. So again, in your quiet time, if you will just say a prayer for the Wiley family, that would be, that would be so appreciated. And if you want to donate to the GoFundMe, just reach out to me, I will give you the information. My number is four seven zero four five six zero zero six six. And on a much happier note, we have some amazing staff in Stonecrest. And I'm not putting anybody above anybody else, but that, that LaKethia Gray, when I tell you she thinks of things that you just can't imagine, amazing. Our childhood, third annual childhood cancer awareness family day was held Saturday at the Aquatic Center. I appreciate you, city manager, more than you know. Y'all, we had live mermaids. And we had diversity, equity, and inclusion because we included everybody in our... We had a young man to come from Beaufort, Georgia, who is a survivor, Brently, Brently Russell, and he spoke. And when I tell you, he just melted my heart when he got ready to leave. He said, can I give you one more hug? Oh my gosh, yes you can, Brently. He and his family came, had a new partner, Rally's. They deal with childhood cancer patients and all of the things that go with it. There's some legislation that a mom shared with me, I'll bring that, I'll bring that a little bit later. But y'all, it was amazing to have families in our city who left with a smile because of the memories that were made. I can't, I can't begin to tell all the folks who were there and who helped to make this event great, but you know who you are, thank you, thank you, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Tha, will you invite us back to the Lew Walker Center again?
Absolutely, I can. Well then, if you give me one moment to pull it up, and I apologize.
Okay, I apologize for not giving you a warning. Anyone else have any announcement for the good of the order?
Yes, so on loop, so I would like to invite everyone out again to the 20th anniversary of the Lew Walker Senior Center, going on from three to seven. The Man, the Dream, and the Mission Anniversary Celebration will be on Saturday, September 13th, from three to seven PM at the Lew Walker Senior Center. Again, Lew Walker has been a thorough community partner with the city of Stonecrest in hosting many of our town halls within District Two, being there to be able to hold, host a meeting space for some of our, our seasoned residents in Stonecrest. And so we are very happy to add, to celebrate with them. I will be there in Gl, I will be there, I assume the ma-
You're there on my behalf, sir.
I'm there on her, I'm there on, I'm there on behalf, and we want to invite everybody out there, so please make sure you guys show up, please celebrate with them and be able to, and be able to hang out with us on that day.
And you have the proclamation?
Yes, I will. I will have a proclamation to give to them on that day. We are working on making sure it's nice and framed and everything else. I'm sorry, y'all, this is my first time doing it, so we're working on that and making sure it's perfect.
Big stuff to fill, you just read. That.
He was not cursive.
And it's in handwriting.
And as a proud DeKalb County Schools graduate, I will do the best I can.
I got all confidence in you.
And, and with that, Mayor Protem, I do believe I do have a request for executive session.
They have a request for executive session?
Yes, sir.
Say your answer.
Um, Mayor Protem, I move to go into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, real estate, and cybersecurity.
Just seconds. It is properly moved and second to go into litigation for-
Hey, hey, let's not do that, let's not add any more of that.
What, what? Yeah, let's not, let's go in there, well, that's why, okay. Give me a break, you guys kept me up too late. It has been properly moved and seconded to go into executive session for personnel, litigation, real estate, and cybersecurity. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion was signed by by saying aye opposed, this is out of District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four is aye, District Five. Motion carries five to zero, we are temporarily adjourned to executive session. Thank you to our guests for coming out this evening. If you are going to stick around till we come back, appreciate you so much, and please come again.
Councillor, at this time we entertain the motion to come out of executive session and return to our regularly scheduled work session.
So moved.
Chair seconds. Um, although the is the Republican movement second to come out of executive session and returns our regular work session. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion was signify by saying aye. Opposed, they started District one. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four is aye. District five is absent. Motion carries four to zero. Councillor, at this time I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes from executive session.
Mayor Protem.
Councilman Fai.
Moved to approve the amendments from executive session.
To the bottom of the second to come out of, I mean to approve the minutes from executive session. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion were signify by saying aye. Opposed, they started District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four is aye. District five is absent. Motion carries four to zero. Councillor, is anything else to come before this body before we declare adjournment?
I would like to just to give a reminder to everyone that September tenth is our combined tips and finance meeting. So please attend either virtually or in person. You're expected to be there. Thanks so much, Mayor Protem. My withdrawal.
Anything else? There's none and having exhausted the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.